All right, good evening. It's Thursday, April 8th, 2021. This is the regular meeting of Arlington Heights School District 25 School Board. We've already had a motion to move into open session, so Madam Secretary, if you would note the roll, let's move directly to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. We'll start here with some recognition for our incredibly awesome custodial and maintenance staff, some of which are here.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to recognize our custodial and maintenance staff tonight. Thank you to the Arlington Heights School District 25 facilities and maintenance staff for your commitment and contributions to our students, staff, and community. This past year, since March 2020, you have worked tirelessly to ensure the Arlington Heights School District 25 community is provided with clean facilities throughout the entire pandemic. At the end of last school year, you helped support the food distribution efforts moving food and supplies. In addition, you also helped student belonging pickup and distribution organizing them in the buildings and helping with the distribution back to the students. This year, you have helped move thousands of desks and classroom furniture to create socially-distanced classrooms and spaces throughout each building. You planned, organized, and adapted to a dynamic atmosphere during the pandemic for the benefit of the students and staff throughout the entire Arlington Heights School District 25 community. Your ability to adapt throughout the pandemic, preparing the buildings and grounds for a safe return of staff and students, is greatly appreciated and demonstrates your caring nature to always go above and beyond the expectations. I also want to point out, we had a pretty mild winter. This past winter, it was between January 26th and February 15th, we received 34.1 inches of snow, going down as the snowiest three weeks since 1979. There were also nine consecutive days of measurable snowfall this season, tying the record for the most days in a row with snow. So on top of all of the other stuff, you had a little snow to remove. A total of 48 inches. So on behalf of District 25 and the Arlington Heights community, we want to thank the facilities and maintenance staff for their collective work on behalf of the community. Thank you. So we know many were not able to join, but we will read their names. We'll do it by school. And if I could have you, if you are present, come on up to get a certificate and a bag showing our appreciation. So Lori, if you would work on these certificates, I will do the bags this time as well.
I'll do my best.
All right. So starting with Dryden, we have three to recognize: Ralph Idol, Michael Martin, and Ron Miller. Come on up, Ron. To Dunton, we have five to recognize: Jeff Bajoric, come on up. I'll try to remove the flat brown. Tom Klein, Julie Mendelke, Daniel Mendoza, and last but not least, the leader of the ship, Moving to Greenbrier, we have three to be recognized: Devin Gresham, Jonathan Kaner, and Claudio Kita. Congratulations, Greenbrier. At Ivy Hill, we have Eric Bocek, Sharisa Caitlin, and Erin Wagner. Thank you, Erin. Next, at Minor, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 to recognize, starting with Dave Gayler. You guys are so friendly. Dave, if you're watching, that's for you. Roger Hughes, come on up, Roger. Eric Mueller, John Passmore, Jose Patlin, Mike Schraefel, Anthony Ergo, and Fred Wimmer. Moving to Olive Mary Stitt, we have four to recognize, starting with Dwayne Martin, John Coranta, Bob Sesterhen, and Jimmy Stewart. Next up, moving to Patton Elementary School, John Bataglia, Jeffrey Bolt, and Bert Watkins. Moving to South Middle School, Derek Catlin, Salvatore Evola, Ricky Lewandowski, Adam Mathias, and Joe Sax. Moving to Thomas Middle School, we have Mr. Leroy Dansby, come on up. Note, this is the first time I've honored Leroy and not had him come sing a song at a microphone. You got tonight off. Sergio Flores, Karen Hart, Cody Hauerberg, come on up. Lou, would you like to sing a song? Moving to Westgate, we have three to recognize: Andy Avilas, Mike Kula, and Greg Probst. Thank you, Westgate. And last but not least, moving to Windsor, and I'm hoping I didn't miss anyone, Ray Angeloff, Jeff Jaster, Sargon Mati, and last but not least, Mr. Frank Rojas. All right, did I miss anyone that is present? Perfect. So on behalf of the district one more time and the entire community, we sincerely appreciate all of your efforts this year and last year, and thank you so much for coming back to be recognized. You do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. This is your soft exit.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd just, I'd like to follow up with Dr. K. Before you guys leave, I just want to share a personal note. A couple of years ago, Patton, they had dressed as your favorite staff member. My son dressed as Mr. Bataglia, or as he likes to call him, Mr. B. So you do have a positive and meaningful impact on our kids, so just know that. They look up to you every day, and you do hold a special place in their hearts. So thank you again.
Absolutely.
Do you mind if I put you on?
Yeah, why?
Yeah.
It is, but it's me.
All right, good evening. This is the point in our agenda to speak to the board, provided the, the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions as board, as the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate this meeting, in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to do the following, to adhere to the following guidelines: address the board only at a time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allotted time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people to have the opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and courteous. The board requests that you do not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during this portion or public comment period, but we do listen attentively and appreciate the input from our community. All right. Oh, a couple more.
I think there's three seats together over there.
All right. First public comment is from Heidi Graham.
You're good. Oh, just for my space? No, oh, I thought you were telling me to stay, to stay in my seat. Hi, I'm Heidi Graham. Thank you for your commitment to our community, board members, for being our elected yet volunteer board members. So my name is Heidi Graham, and I'm a resident of Arlington Heights, a District 25 taxpayer. My children attended Windsor Elementary and South Middle School. While my children received an excellent education, I know that their worldview would be much improved had they had a more diverse staff from which to learn. In a combined 18 years, my children had only one teacher of color, and I do not know of a single black teacher at either school. I count growing up on a diverse military-based communities as the single greatest asset of my upbringing. I believe the proposed DEI policy will make our schools better and thus even more desirable. We all know more desirable schools drive property values, and respected research shows time and again that a more diverse community equates to a better economic outcome for all. I want to also share with you a story about how our lack of diversity has direct and meaningful effects. I'm sharing this story with the permission of the person I'm talking about, but not sharing this young person's name. My son was in nearly every class of elementary school with a young black girl. She had an infectious smile, and I always loved seeing her, as I was a frequent volunteer in school. She and my son didn't share any interests or friends, but because she had a brother in my daughter's grade and her family lived nearby, we became friendly. Fast forward to high school, my son is now a senior at Prospect, and I ran into her brother and her family at a Prospect basketball game. She was absent. I asked after her and lamented that I hadn't seen her in a long time, and they told me that after years of feeling not connected, or as if she belongs, they had allowed her to go and live with her aunt in Evanston. As soon as their son graduated from Prospect, they too moved. What a tragedy for our community to lose this family. Please stand by what you know is right and continue with DEI as part of your strategic plan. Thank you so much for your service to our community and for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Karen Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Karen Thomas. I am a D-25 alum, a parent alum, and a current resident here. I am also the board chair of DEI for the League of Women Voters in Arlington Heights Mount Prospect in Buffalo Grove. The League of Women Voters, for those of you that may not know, is a nonpartisan organization that works hard to ensure that all our community members' needs are being met by providing resources, holding space for conversations, distributing information on a wide array of relevant issues, and listening to our community. I'm here tonight to show mine and the League's support with the board moving forward with the strategic plan as is currently written, keeping the DEI goals and core values embedded within. The work over the last few years toward making D-25 a more inclusive place for all our students and families is important and should continue. We are not ahead of other districts at this time in terms of our inclusive policy and practices, and thus need to keep pushing forward with intention. The proposed strategic plan, along with the DEI policy, is a strong start. The Illinois Board of Education has adopted new standards that specifically support teachers in creating equitable classrooms. Our neighboring school districts have been incorporating inclusive programs, culturally responsive practices, and amending their curriculum to be anti-racist, include multiple perspectives, and be reflective of the students in their community. There has been a push across the nation to acknowledge and rectify inequities in education. It is clear that our board, district staff, and students have realized it is time for D-25 to start this work, too. One of our longtime goals in the district has been to improve the academic outcomes for all of our students. The feeling of belonging is crucial to this improvement and to improve the academic outcomes for all students. Therefore, our policies and strategic plan need to align with the DEI policy that was already adopted, allowing our school faculty to plan, create, learn, and teach in ways that foster anti-racist practices and inclusivity. I was not fortunate to feel supported, included, or safe during my school days here in the district, which impacted not only my emotional well-being, but my academic performance. It is extremely hard to see my daughter have a very similar experience still. The strategic plan and DEI policy is an important step of many and sets a path that will clearly direct our schools in becoming a more equitable and inclusive place for our children to develop and learn. Thank you so much for your time.
Karen Joseph.
Thank you, Jennifer. That was Karen Thomas.
Oh, did I call out a order? Okay, Jennifer.
Yeah, hi. Hi, my name is Jennifer. Good evening. I am here tonight as a graduate of District 25. I recently returned to the community as a brand-new District 25 parent, as my daughter is in kindergarten this year. Growing up, I was always told I was lucky to attend school in such a good school district. And as an educator myself, I know the reputation District 25 has as a highly-rated district. Even in grad school, in my school psychology program, District 25 was a recommended placement for internship. In so many ways, District 25 is ahead in meeting the needs of children, yet here we are, questioning the impact and need of our own approved diversity, equity, and inclusion policy, a policy that quite frankly is long overdue. As an educator, I know that DEI is not new, it is not trendy, but it is the right thing to do for our children. I applaud the district for its commitment to eliminate racial injustice. However, right now, tonight, we are asking the wrong question. We should not be asking if we should, or if we should take a pause, we should be asking how to catch up. Many schools around the country have hired equity directors, implemented training for staff, and have added to the curriculum so that it is representative of additional experiences. I myself have participated in DEI work for 14 years. Mean East High School in Park Ridge has a large banner hung on the outside of the school proclaiming their support of all their students. Notes from a District 59 board meeting in 2020, a neighboring district, states needs that include increasing celebration and communication of specific cultures and races. Notes from a District 59 board meeting, I'm sorry, I just read the one, School District 65 in Evanston and Skokie, in 2016, the board approved the district racial inequity statement recognizing that excellence requires a commitment to equity and addressing institutional racism. District 219 Niles Township sent an email to every family, student, and staff member in response to the recent hate crimes against the Asian community that included, "Our district is committed to being anti-racist. Hate has no home in District 219." The IASB, the Illinois Association of School Boards, declares on their website, "School Board members are responsible for the equitable and quality education for every student," and a definition of educational equity is provided. It reads, "Educational equity means every student has access to the educational resources and rigor they need at the right moment in their education, and students' needs are not going unmet due to race, ethnicity, dominant language, disability, gender, sexual orientation, religion, family background, and/or family income." Now, the reason as to why there is a sense of urgency and there is no time for a pause on our DEI work is not because we want to compete with other school districts, it's because of our children of color that attend our schools. I'm not sure how many of you have listened to the forum that was organized by the League of Women Voters entitled Through Our Eyes. You can find this very important and brave summit on racism that's focused on Arlington Heights on the League's Facebook page. I will tell you, it's difficult to hear the personal stories of our BIPOC families and their truth of personal experiences with racism in our community. There are stories referencing students being called the N-word, a resident who feels incomplete because she has never had a teacher that looks like her, and racist pictures of students being circulated via social media. So I will say it again, we should not be asking if we should, or if we should take a pause, we should be asking how to catch up. Let's continue to do better for our kids. Thank you.
All right. Am I still in order here, Karen Joseph? Now I got you. Keep these in front of me here. Sorry about that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Joseph, and I am the mother of three biracial white and black students in District 25. I've been closely following the board's actions related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I want to share a personal example of why these initiatives are so important. My oldest son, a District 25 student, he was honored by the PTA at the last board meeting. His animated film entitled, "You Can Make a Difference," won the State of Illinois PTA Reflections Competition for Film at the middle school level. His work opens with picket signs and a question about, "Why are we still struggling to ensure that Black lives matter?" This opening shot of his film was the slide that was up on screen during the beginning of the last board meeting. I watched my son create this work last year as he asked questions about the murder of George Floyd and as our family dealt with issues about safety and the anti-black vandalism that occurred throughout Arlington Heights. I watched my son struggle to make sense of the world going on around him, a world he wants to impact in a positive way. My son then used his artistic talent to express his concern and create a call to action. In his film, he says, "And we need to do something about it," and he gives suggestions for action. He's not waiting, and he's not taking a pause. In fact, my son actually believes this problem can be solved. This is not political, this is not controversial, but it is personal. Standing up for those who are not treated fairly is a personal decision, and my son is encouraging us to all do that. Many watching last month's meeting may not have realized it was my son's work, a District 25 student's work that was up on the screen. We were watching at home, and we were excited to see his film presented, a film that was honored at the region and state levels and that is going on to compete and represent District 25 at the national level, but it was hard to watch that his work was not recognized by all in our community the same way. My son's humanity and the way he uses his art to address tough questions is not a question of values. His humanity and the humanity of students who are perceived as being different in some way should not be in question. Providing all students with what they need to succeed, equity, should not be in question. The purpose of DEI initiatives is not to take anything away from anyone, it's to create an environment where no District 25 student needs to be fearful of being themselves, but they should have an environment where they can all see and be themselves. I would like to see more open and facilitated conversations about DEI, and I would be happy to participate. If we're serious about DEI, that's really where we need to start. We need to have courageous conversations, and they won't always be easy, but nothing that's good really comes easy, right? So, so let's get to work. Let's follow my son's lead, an 11-year-old student in District 25. He is taking action. He's asking everyone to do their part, and now I'm asking you to do your part. Keep moving forward on the strategic plan and the DEI policy. Any pause on the plan, any pause on the DEI policy, is a pause on all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right, Diana Crissis, come on down.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board during public comments. I'm Diana Crissis, a former three-term School District 25 board member who has either served with you or interviewed all of you except one. I come before you tonight to express my concern and disappointment with the business of the board and your responsibilities to all stakeholders in the district. Schools are a business, the business of educating the children that reside within the district using a finite pool of funds unless the voters decide to pass a tax referendum. Your job is to manage the trade-offs that are always required because we don't have all of the money that is required to satisfy all of the requests of all the stakeholders. You have far less impact on the here and now, and those of you who ran on a slate don't seem to understand that fact, nor the fact that your responsibilities are being managed by your board agreements, which you all signed. Which brings me to this piece of mail that I received prior to Tuesday's election. Two of you campaigned on no new taxes, and you said that your opponents' positions are unknown. Well, all of your positions are unknown. Per your board agreements, you've chosen to speak with one voice, so only the way for the board, as a whole, to implement a new tax is via a majority decision to go to referendum. Let's say for something like a multimillion-dollar investment, like full-day kindergarten, if offered across the district. Board agreements start with the common belief that everyone has good intentions and no surprises. Why would a board member help a family in District 21 bring a lawsuit against District 25 in order to obtain busing outside of our boundaries? Why would a board member FOIA the employment contracts of superintendents in surrounding districts? All of that wastes taxpayer monies and administrators' time. And finally, my And finally, my favorite, crossing the aisle to sign a statement of unity? Hmm. That's a euphemism that is used in partisan politics. And as you all well know, school board members do not participate in partisan politics. We don't even represent our neighborhoods. That's what aldermen do. So let's talk about real unity. I ask that you abide by your board agreements. You all signed up for that. And the decisions that you are making today are impacting my grandchildren, your grandchildren, and the future children in this district for generations to come. Your decisions are either going to help them, or perhaps harm them. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Good to see you again, too, on the other side. All right, Maria Brower?
My name is Maria Brower. I'm an Arlington Heights resident, and I have a six-year-old who will be starting at first grade at Ivy Hill in the fall. But tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Members of VOCAL, a nonpartisan community engagement group with more than 1,000 members that aim to be a positive voice for Arlington Heights and their surrounding suburbs. Our mission is to bridge differences to create a supported, connected community that celebrates diversity and practices tolerance and acceptance. Since our group's establishment four years ago, we have become a safe space where members can share their experiences of injustice and work together to promote a more inclusive community. Because of this work, we know firsthand that racism, white supremacy, and various types of discrimination have harmed and continue to harm our community members. Put simply, Arlington Heights and District 25 has work to do. Our community needs to continue to make positive changes to embody the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is vital for goals related to diversity, equity, and inclusion to be included in the strategic plan. We understand that a group of over 30 community members worked with a contractor over many months to develop a strategic plan and obtained community feedback during that process. We urge the board to approve that strategic plan as written, including the DEI goals and core values. We believe that any pause or removal of those DEI values and core values from the strategic plan would limit District 25's ability to create a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive school community. Also, the removal of the DEI goals or core values from the strategic plan sends a message to those most in need of those measures that ending the racism, bias, and discrimination they endure is not a district policy or priority. Finally, we as a committee applaud the district for the DEI Policy 132, and we look forward to seeing the district move forward and putting it into action. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. All right, Kate Reno?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm Kate Reno, an Arlington Heights resident, a teacher at Thomas Middle School, a coach, an involved union member, and a proud product of an SD25 education. All of these aspects undoubtedly contribute to who I am as an individual and definitely impact my perspective and the thoughts I'd like to share with you tonight. However, I'm not speaking from any role other than the individual that I am. Little personal history. As a first grader at Windsor Elementary School, I had what I considered at that time the best teacher. She taught me to read. Seven or eight years old, I knew I was going to be a teacher. Middle school, South middle school, I had an exemplary PE teacher, a coach that I bonded with and am still in touch with to this day. That is my profession, that is the impact she has had on me and that this district has had on me. With that said, I am so fond of my memories when I look back. I am so proud to be a product of this district and the profound impact it has had on my life. As a teacher, now with 13 years of experience, I have always believed that I chose my passion and profession correctly and that I was always meant to be a teacher. Undoubtedly, this has been the most challenging of years, personally and professionally. It has been difficult for all: students, parents, building and district-level administrators, school board members, and our community at large. I will honestly admit, there have been times where I thought, "I don't know if I can do this this year, and I don't know if I want to continue to work in this community." It is something I never thought I would feel, and I would never want to feel that again. It has been disheartening to see the fractures of our community, and it's long overdue that we do something about it. Numerous stakeholders have spoken before you, and as you have addressed some of the comments and concerns, you have also addressed this divisiveness within our community, and I've heard the term "we are a divided community." It feels as though we all know this, and yet we haven't taken action to actually reach across and start to heal some of those divisions. And I think it's long overdue for us to all do that. The results of a school board election will not magically heal us. Our words and actions, and I also believe a concerted effort by the school board to start bringing the community together can only begin to address our issues. I am asking you, as a school board, fully recognizing that the workload this year has been immense, and there are major, major topics still on the table that need to be addressed, but I will ask it nonetheless, for you to address the issue that has been going on for now over a year, which is the fallout of the pandemic on the social and emotional well-being of our community of Arlington Heights. I ask that you think creatively about how to best bring and heal our community, find opportunities for us to come together. The best of this community is when we truly come together and support and uplift one another. Let's start by hearing each other, by re-establishing empathy for the challenges of our shared experiences, and by starting the process to rebuild trust. I have always been proud to live and work in this community, and I desperately want to get back to that feeling every single day of the week. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
I normally don't clap for speakers, for obvious reasons, but that was, uh, thank you, Kate. That was awesome. Erica Devine, did I say that right?
Hi, my name is Erica Devine. I'm a proud parent, D25 parent, of an Olive Mary Stitt daughter and a son at Thomas Middle School. I'm here today to talk to you about the DEI policy, and I fully support the DEI policy that is part of the current strategic plan. I've always felt that D25 is a leader in education in the community, and I must admit that I was both perplexed and disappointed to find out that the board is revisiting the policy. I have seen small, positive changes in the past year that have had an impact on both my children. From being exposed to diverse authors and stories to also including different perspectives in history and highlighting BIPOC leaders, this has led to great family discussions on DEI at my house and increased awareness of DEI of my children and our entire family. And to quote from the current DEI policy, "We commit to continuously improve our actions on diversity, equity, and inclusion to addressing the hard questions with measurable impact and to implementing change that levels the playing ground for all of our students." Revisiting the DEI policy and possibly pausing or removing it from the strategic plan signals to me that the board feels that there is no more work to be done. In fact, we still have a long way to go. As others had mentioned, we are now behind many other districts and communities in the area, and we really need to keep DEI a priority and keep it in the strategic plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erica. Alison Berg? Love the shirt.
Hi, my name is Alison Berg. I teach 4th grade at Windsor School, and I just wanted to address the board tonight to reiterate that Mondays do matter. It isn't just used for small group instruction, which is so important for our kids' academic growth, but it's also for the social and emotional well-being of our students. We mustn't forget that we still have students who are learning from home, and Mondays are the only day of the week where all students, remote and in-person, are on the same platform. The playing field is leveled, allowing students to interact with one another, allowing whole-class discussions to take place, allowing kids to be partnered with students they don't have a chance to otherwise work with. While remote students are a minority in most of the buildings, they are still our students. They will have, they still have a place in our classrooms. They still need the same attention from their teachers. They still need to interact with their peers, and they are still a part of our classroom community. We ask that you please preserve the last six remote Mondays of the year so that all of our students will be represented equally in our classrooms. Thank you for your time.
Audrey Corcoran? And friend, sister? Both? Friend. What's your name? Hi, Nora.
My name is Audrey. I hate remote Mondays because people in my class don't pay attention, and for some reason, that bothers me. I think everyone should be paying attention like they do in person. Mondays are hard for me because I would rather do things on paper than seesaw. It's easier for me. Finding and resizing text boxes takes a long time. I lose my internet a lot. That makes me bonkers. I would rather be socializing with my friends and seeing my teacher at school. Zoom should not be for school. It was originally invented for work calls. I think that Zooms should not exist for school. It is very horrible. I cannot stand it. My sister says I do not like remote Mondays because I get kicked on Zoom a lot. Now, the school says I failed my vision test. I think it is because of Zoom. It is not fair that my brother gets to go to school, and when he gets home, he is a pest. Here are some things that my friends said when I asked them if they liked Mondays at home. There are so many tech wishes when we are remote. Being at school with my friends makes me feel happy. If we get to go to school on Monday, I will get gym music in person instead of Zoom. There are kids that do whatever they want and turn off their cameras, text other friends, watch TV, and you don't even know if they are ditching class. There are too many distractions. I miss the social interaction with others and hate being outside during remote learning when I could see my teachers in person. I hate it. I don't get to see my friends in person. When I do not understand something, I do not have a teacher to help me in person. I hate Mondays because I don't get to see my friends in person. I don't like when people turn off their cameras or distract others with things at home, like noise, or their pets, or toys, or loud talking. I hate Mondays. It is lonely. I am bored a lot. It is depressing. I learn nothing, and I can't keep my eyes open. I'm always starving. It's annoying to get kicked out of Zoom and miss lessons. It's hard to focus with everyone in my house, also e-learning. I don't learn as much at home as in person. Looking at a screen for six hours gives me a headache. Mondays at home are horrible because they are boring. All you are doing is sitting in a room all day, and it gets lonely. I do not, I don't learn anything, and my activities are so ea, are too easy. Mondays in person matter to me.
Thank you, Audrey. Katie Rousch?
Can you guys hear me? I'm Katie Rousch, and I'm here to speak for a lot of our IEP and 504 families who are not here today, but I'm going to represent them. Dr. Bein stated that starting April 26, Mondays would be in person. Please hold yourself accountable and follow through on this statement as the community continues to watch your leadership. Mondays look different for everyone. This I know. I am a stay-at-home mother with a teaching degree, and I'm able to supplement for my children when they have finished activities and still have an hour or so left before they sign in on Zoom again. Even though my children are fine, many families in this community are not. Many parents cannot help. I'm here to speak up for them. I'm a parent who has engaged with families all over this district, and they need their voices heard, especially families of students with IEP and 504 plans. What do you think their Mondays look like for them? They are the most vulnerable students in D25. How are you helping them? How do you make their minutes? How do you accommodate for them? How do you modify for them? How do you provide related services for them? How do you do any of this effectively when it's virtually? Are you even compliant with IEPs? Most parents would say no. In many homes throughout the district, Mondays involve children having meltdowns or simply disengaging in any or all activities. Parents feel defeated and hopeless. Learning cannot take place in such an environment. You talk about the achievement gap. However, the last time I was here, I mentioned that our IEP students have the largest performance gap in this district. It's greater than the state. I also mentioned that. Why do we continue to provide one-fifth of their weekly instruction virtually, knowing most of these students cannot learn on screens? Sadly, the gap is getting larger and larger for our most vulnerable kids. Mondays are not measurable. Every teacher, grade level in school varies. That is 20% of their education. That is subjective, and therefore, future assessments are less accurate. If data drives interventions and instruction, then this needs to be addressed. Please consider what Mondays mean to our families as well as our teachers since we're all supposed to have common goals of doing what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Monica Tietz? Did I say that right?
No.
Didn't come out right.
It's Monica Tietz. Good evening. My name is Monica Tietz, and I'm a District 25 parent. As you can hear, I am an immigrant. Therefore, every time I open my mouth, I need to go a step further to prove my intelligibility. I am an adult, and I can deal with it, especially that it's a consequence of my conscious choice in life. But it really upsets me when I think about other people, especially kids, when they need to go an extra step to prove they are equal and human only because they look different, act different, or speak different than majority does. This is why I did not hesitate to reply to an email from Olive Mary Stitt PTA asking for volunteers to form the first DEI committee in our district that is now known as Every Owl Counts. Over the past few years, myself and Karen are doing whatever we can to make sure every child and every parent in our school feels welcome. Before COVID, we hosted Bilingual Family Night, where families with bilingual kids could connect with each other. School and our school and Arlington Heights Memorial Laboratory shared resources, and kids could see that they are not the only one that need to attend Sunday Language School. We purchased dolls for kindergarten rooms for kids to see themselves and different types of people with different abilities. We work close with LMC Director, and we purchased an extensive book collection with diverse characters. We were supporting efforts to bring diverse authors to our school and advocating for diverse representation in one-book-one-school program. We submitted our comments for the strategic plan, and we are happy that they were included in final draft. We are afraid of what we do not know. DEI might sound scary and political, but it is not. It is about us and our humanity. So please do not deny it to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Jen Kim?
Good evening. My name's Jen Kim, and I stand before you as a lifelong resident of Arlington Heights. Forty of my 43 years, I have had an Arlington Heights resident. I grew up feeling safe, secure, accepted, but I'm not naive. I fully understand that not every child living in Arlington Heights today feels as safe and secure and is accepted as I did growing up here. That's why I'm here in support of the DEI initiatives and the strategic goals that you've put in place to help improve this. It's the first crucial steps to make sure that every child, no matter what race, economic status, how they relate to the LGBT community or learning disability, feels as safe and as secure and as accepted as I did growing up in this community. And until we get there... And until we get there, we have a lot of work to do, and the steps that you are starting today is the long road of a much-needed path we must walk down. So I thank you for all your time and effort in this, and thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Kim Dryer.
Hi. I came back to talk about some discussions that happened at the previous board meeting. The last time we were here, we had admin presentations about why it is best to keep our routine with Mondays remote for the rest of the year. It is also what the board negotiated with the teachers' union. They talked about how many of the kids who were full-time or remote were our neediest kids, perhaps some of the families and residents that we've been talking about in the DEI initiative. So then, everybody was excited about being inclusive. We had this great presentation. And later in the evening, one of our board members said it was his job to represent the 85% majority of children attending school, not the 15% that were fully remote. We do not teach to 85% of our children. We teach to 100% of our children. We would be remiss if we did anything less. And I have to say, that comment was extremely offensive to teaching staff. With that in mind, why would we change anything that's going so well under the current circumstances that we're under? People need routine. Children need routine. We've changed our routine four times this year. And if we change our routine again, we would be changing the routine and making people adjust to something new with less than 40 days left of school. How could that be advantageous to anyone in this place and time? What we should do is use our time to plan to go five days a week next fall and implement a wonderful program that would help those 15% of people if they choose to stay remote and the 85% if they choose to return in person. With that, I'd like to thank Erin Johansson for representing us so beautifully in the last years. The staff so appreciates the way that you have served us with dignity and collaboration. So thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Stephen Zunic? Zurich?
Good evening. I am here tonight on behalf of Todd Whitrow. Todd asked me to read the following. I speak for myself in saying that I am relieved for April 6th, Election Day, to have come and gone. The last three months have taught me a lot about local elections, our district, our families, and our community members. There were numerous highlights and several lowlights as well. The single greatest highlight of the last three months has been the opportunity to meet so many parents and community members with a passion to advocate for their children and all the children in the community. Almost every community member, all eight Board of Election candidates and district leaders have stated we need to unify and heal as a community. Words and ideas are great, but we need solutions and meaningful action. So can the board unify? Individuals have pointed to the divide of, on the board. Yet, some of those same individuals call for a board that embodies a diversity of thought and acceptance for not agreeing on all topics. To me, an effective member of the board must be able to demonstrate their leadership through decision-making, as long as any board member seeks out diverse inputs from the community, applies their own research, analyzes the input, and makes a decision which they are able to clearly articulate. I will never question their decision. The results of April 6th, April 6th has unfortunately left the community and the district with a status quo from the last four years and specifically the last 12 months. The three incumbents seeking reelection were reelected. Can the superintendent unify? Our superintendent is still in place to lead the district. I do believe that an increased level of inclusion across a broader set of our teachers will help unify. We need from the diverse voices of our teacher, teachers. The last year has been fluid, dynamic, and new. We cannot afford to have our essential teachers' diverse inputs be consolidated into a single output for all. Dr. Bynne, I ask you to lead in engaging a diverse population of teachers before making recommendations. This will help, but will not make significant improvement in healing our divide. So, so who has been a significant source of divide and who can lead in healing the divide? The voice and actions of the ATA. In your collective endorsement of Greg and Anisha, seen by thousands of members of the community, the headline was Unity and Community First. Your actions speak louder than your written words. Community first? Putting the community first is not using your employee privileges to exclude community members from board meetings as you did in October. Unity first? Putting unity first is not violating the terms of your MOU to campaign at a board meeting without discipline in December to state that you will work tirelessly to campaign against candidates who are advocating for our community. The dynamics of the board and the superintendent will remain unchanged for the next two years. The most influential group that has the ability to change their actions to begin the healing process is the union. Let your actions speak louder than words. The superintendent and the board must hold you accountable to be the change agent and point out unity for our community, not the source of divide you have driven over the last school year. Thank you.
All right. Jaclyn Durangowski.
Hi. Can I move this up? I'm a little short. I mean, a little tall. That's unusual. Hi, I'm Jaclyn Durangowski, 208 South Derbyshire Lane. I have three children. Two are in District 25, and one is a freshman in District 214. Thanks you for, the board for being here. Welcome, the new members of the board. Thank you for everyone's effort that you did in running in the elections. I appreciate the volunteer effort that you put in and the people who are currently on the board and the time that you have put in to be a member of this board. I think it takes a lot of patience and effort and critical thinking to meet and process all the diverse opinions that come before you and try to come to a decision that you think represents everyone in the community to the best of your ability, and I thank you for that. Tonight, I'm here to talk, what I had originally asked the board going back to January, is about Policy 132, which is the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Policy. I didn't really know anything about it. It all started when I looked at the Culture Response of Teaching and Leading Standards because I'd heard about it, and I really didn't know anything about it. So I asked to get a copy of it. I was lucky when I called somebody in Springfield, and I got a copy that showed what the old policy was in red and the new policy in blue. And it was challenging to kind of figure out what it was. And I sat and listened to the JCAR meeting when they only had 11 members, and it was a six-to-five vote not to approve it, because that's not how JCAR works. They just couldn't block it. The argument was made by Steven Reich that that really should not have been before JCAR because that was not their role. This was a change in law. So it's something that should have gone before the Illinois General Assembly. But it went that route through JCAR. So they didn't vote it through. It just went six-to-five. You needed eight votes to oppose it. But then, we're talking with people in Springfield. They said, "Well, then, you know, you have to go to your local school board and then talk to them." Really, that's really what's important. And that's how I then discovered Policy 132. And I read it, and I've asked, passed a couple of board meetings, to put it up on the screen so people could look at it. Because when you say it's on, you know, the website, nobody looks at the website. They can't find it on the website. And I found it vague and ambiguous. I couldn't understand it. And when I started asking people about it, people couldn't explain it to me. When I said, "Well, what is diversity, equity, inclusion?" Most people, when you ask them what equity is, they'll define equality. And I had to look it up because I wasn't sure I understood it. And so equity, as I said in the last board meeting, is the control of resources for outcomes. And the analogy I made last time was in a family, you know, of four kids, are you going to have the exact same equity, the exact same outcomes, even though you pretty much are doing, trying as a parent to do the same things for them? So I'm not going to argue about what those words are. What I had asked for the policy be presented today is for the community. What does the policy mean? Define the terms. We have diverse opinions in this community, and that is awesome. That's what we want. Because when people don't agree, but they sit down and they talk it out and they compromise, you think you're going to get to a better level than if just one side gets what they want or if another side shouts out somebody else, then they get what they want. I'm not going to stamp my feet. I'm not going to scream. I'm not going to call people names. Anecdotally, I've had that happen to me. Just because I disagree with somebody doesn't make me a racist. Just because I am talking about difficult things doesn't mean you can point to an immutable characteristic about my children that they're white and they're snowflakes. I am not afraid of anybody. I can't hurt people because I have a different opinion. But this policy matters. I don't understand it. I don't understand how you can pass a policy, but you can't explain it to me. You brought the policy to the board, and you wanted this policy. But I would think, just like the progressive tax, it should have been presented to the community like a referendum, explained, and then they get to vote because it affects the curriculum. It affects the books. It has an impact. What I may think of diversity is diversity of thought to develop critical thinking. Someone else may have a different idea what that means. It's just about being transparent, explaining to the community, and then see how that goes with the strategic plan. But if we can't agree with what equity is, what diversity is, and inclusion is, how can you pass a strategic plan if nobody can even agree what those words mean? So I don't think it's a bad thing to say, "Hold on. Let's talk about this more. Let's get more community engagement to make sure we all understand and we're all on the same page." Because if not, my fear and my concern and why I originally brought this up, are we just going to start putting fences around people? And this tribe is here, and this tribe is there. And in the email I sent to all the board, my concern is for the kids because those fences aren't going to be made out of wood. They're going to be made out of barbed wire. And if they get too close, they're going to get hurt because they didn't know they were too close to the fence. So I just want to end it. Everybody, not everybody, but you may have remember Randy Posh, who wrote the book Last Lecture. And I liked the point that he made at the end. It's not about how to achieve your dreams. It's about how to lead your life. If you lead your life the right way, the karma will take care of itself. The dreams will come to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jaclyn. Typically, if we have time, we would read written comments submitted through email. But I think we're past, already past our time just to allow the folks that are here in person. So we will be foregoing that. They will be posted to the website in their entirety. But just in the interest of time, we want to let everybody that came to speak, speak, but we're not going to have time to read the emailed comments. So without further ado, let's move forward on the agenda. We are now on item five. I need a motion for the consent agenda. Don't be shy.
Mr. President.
Yes, Erin.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. Personnel report and addendum to personnel report, treasurer's report, invoices, reduction in forced public hearing meeting minutes of March 18th, 2021, regular enclosed session meeting minutes of March 18th, 2021.
Thank you, Erin. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think I heard Gina. Thank you, Gina. All right. We had no call-outs, no questions, no separate items. So I'll go ahead and start the voting down by Rich.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right. Consent agenda passes 7-0. Now we move on to communications to and from board members, beginning with sadly, her last and final report out, if she can get through it without crying, from Erin Johansson on NSSEO.
I may not.
How did I lead in? Does that help you?
That was perfect. I can tell you, yeah. It was, there were tears shed for sure last night. It was, and it was an emotional evening. And I, I just want to reiterate to anyone, whoever needs a pick-me-up of any kind, for any reason, dial in to an NSSEO board meeting, and you will get that, I promise you. And whoever is next fortunate enough to replace me on that governing board from this board, it will be one of the biggest blessings of your life. I guarantee that, too. So last night, as always, Judy Hackett, the superintendent, talked about the collaboration and hard work they're doing at the state and federal level, always, always, always for the children. The fight is incredible, and she is a real superstar. They're very lucky to have her. There are these lovely masks you can buy. I mean, I know we have 100, but if you need 102, you can buy these through NSSEO. And they have really cute ones that I love you sign, and they're just $5 apiece. So if you, and you know where they are, right by Prospect. You can walk right in and pick some up. There, and exciting news, you know, the last time I talked about how they've earned or raised the money to do the long overdue gym project at Timber Ridge. So that's starting, there'll be a groundbreaking ceremony June 1st. So I get to go. I'm so excited. And they're doing an extended school year. Of course, they're in the same situation as all other students all across the world and trying to provide as much opportunity as they can for those kids to catch up in education. So, and like every other community all across the world, there's never enough teachers. So if you know anyone, they've actually reduced the age of people who can come in and help as aides, and of course, they need teachers as well. So all of those jobs that are available are posted on nseo.org. So if anyone has any interest at all, please check that out.
All right. Well, not to put, thank you, you did. Not to put you or anybody else on the spot. I have to, no. All right. I don't recall off the top of my head, and I won't put anybody on the spot. I don't remember who our backup for NSSEO is because we rarely need them.
Mr. President. I was going to make a comment, but I thought we'd just leave it at that. I just want to just share that I was the alternate for NSSEO, and I think I went to, or served as one, one meeting because that was reluctantly given up her spot so I could be kind of just given the ways of how it worked, and then it was taken away because she never missed a meeting. She was dedicated, and yeah, thank you for, for doing that. It is, it's such an rewarding experience, and you were the perfect person to serve on that board. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So until we realign on all the committee appointments, which is coming pretty quickly here, Scott will be filling in for you. And if anybody else wants to step up, I'll be sending out an email for that and all the other ones that need to be changed, just as an aside. But thank you for all you've done, not just from NSSEO, but for everything. But we'll get to that later. All right. IASB, I'm going to defer to Anisha as I often do. She is...
No, thank you. I, I'm a little emotional after Erin, so I have to keep it together. No, but I do want to say thank you, Erin, for everything that you've done all through the years that you've done it. And I'm going to try and speak without tears, okay? So as far as ISB goes, the board is invited to submit proposals for the 2021 resolutions, and the submission form is live. And that's going to be due by our board June 23rd to the Illinois Association of School Boards. And the 2021 Joint Annual Conference Planning is underway, and it hopefully, hopefully will be in person. So we'll start as a board deciding. We always have, we learn a lot when we go to these joint conferences, and we're looking forward to participate in person this year. So we'll start putting that on our calendar when, when it particularly helps us. Thank you so much. So that's about it for Erin. And I know as far as new board members that, you know, going to be joining us, there's been training that the ISB has provided. So we're, I know folks are taking advantage. Greg is taking advantage of those. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. I or you, one of us should send out that, if I don't do it, hold me accountable, or you do it. The submission by June 23rd. you do it, the submission by June 23rd.
Okay.
Just to remind everybody to kind of give that a once-over. All right, Ed Redd, anything from Stacy?
The Ed Redd meeting is tomorrow.
Oh, all right. Let us know Saturday. All right, Board Governance Framework, all right, so, as I mentioned before, I'm going to try to, in an organized fashion, solicit some input from a different board member every meeting, to cover one of our board agreements, as we decided, you know, kind of unilaterally, that we wanted to start revisiting these. So for tonight, in accordance of bringing on a new board member shortly, I was going to read from our policies, our, our new board member orientation policy. So, "The board desires to be a team where all members contribute to effective board leadership. The board takes initiative in helping new members learn, understand, and practice effective governance. The board president shall arrange a meeting of the whole board to review board processes and procedures. The superintendent shall meet with new board members to answer questions and acquaint the member or members with the district. If desired by a new board member and a veteran member, will be identified as a mentor." And so there's also additional policies in our board, item 2120, which we'll share with any new members, but I just wanted to kind of read that aloud, as we are now through with the election, and we'll be welcoming in a new board member. Any other thoughts or comments on board policies, board governance, I should say? All right. Now we're on to communications to board members, do we have Liz or anyone here from PTA?
Hello, thank you for having me. I'd like to start by thanking Erin for being an amazing liaison to the council, and we appreciate your leadership, your enthusiasm, your kindness, always, so thank you so much for all you've done for us, we'll miss you. The Arlington Heights Council of PTA's graduating senior scholarships have been awarded, the winners have been notified, we will be quickly and soonly sharing all that information with all of you. In lieu of the traditional breakfast, we'll be having a virtual celebration, which is great, so mark your calendars for April 30th, invitations will be coming out, and more of the community will be able to enjoy the achievements of these amazing former District 25 students. Also, our local units are busy adapting their normal end-of-the-year activities. As we're coming to the end of the year, we're starting to think about next year, and the local units are seeking officers, committee chairs, so please consider spreading the word and getting involved with their PTAs through next year. Also, I'd like to point out that it is very easy to join all of your local PTAs at District 25 registration, which will open up in May. That's it, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Liz, I just want to thank you for your leadership in, in trying times, and always being so positive, the PTAs have been doing so many wonderful things in support of families, now, always, but now more than ever, so thank you for all of that.
Absolutely. All right, ABC 25 is in here.
Hi, everyone, so I'm here tonight to ask for your support for our district, our teachers, schools, and our children through the ABC 25 Foundation in three ways. The first is through the Get Bird Challenge, which will be April 24th. This is the unifying event that our district needs, if you've been before, you know it's a great time, and we were lucky to get the village to approve a one-mile event in person. There are still spaces in that in-person event, as well as in our virtual races, so we hope that you will register, it's open through April 21st. This is our biggest fundraiser for the foundation, and we'd love to see you there. The second and the easiest way to support our teachers and the foundation is during your registration for next school year. Join the foundation for the 21-22 school year with a click of the mouse, and this funds our all-school grants to bring creativity, innovation, and excellence to our schools. Then the last way, I'd like you to consider supporting ABC 25, is by joining us on the board or a committee for a very small-time commitment, you can make a really big difference in all these groups, so thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and all you guys do at ABC 25.
I just want to make a quick comment.
Sure.
I just want to say, you know, we're, we're signed up for the, for the run, Ann, and I want to ask board member Philip Peck to train the board, so we can get out one mile faster for the, for the.
I was trying to keep up with you, Anisha, that was, and Dr. K, are you going to be DJing again?
I will.
Okay, that's, that's what kept me going.
We're going to be ready.
All right, ATA, Kelly Trevlin.
Hello, good evening. Got my cheaters on. As teachers, this has been a difficult year, to put it mildly. We, the teachers, have been left feeling discouraged and disrespected this year. Our discouragement comes from feeling like we have not been looked upon as members of this community for the first time in our school district's history. The teachers are a part of this community, many of us live here and send our own children to our schools, many are part of the PTA, we contribute to ABC 25. Many of us have always been proud to be Arlington Heights residents. We never claimed to be heroes, we've been doing our job to the best of our ability during a pandemic, where the rules for teaching change by the minute. It is imperative to understand that the teachers deliver the instruction that makes District 25 a destination district. The teachers never said they were not coming to work, they never once demanded to stay home, they just asked that the district keep our safety in mind by following the guidelines set forth by the CDC and the IDPH. The district chose not to do so. Finally, the teachers have never once stood in the way of the board's decision to move forward. We have voiced our concerns, like many other parents and community members, and the district moved forward with a plan they saw fit. And teachers have risen to the challenge time and time again this year. We have shown up and made the best out of a situation of which there was no handbook to follow. It is disheartening to hear that board members do not support teachers, or that teachers are standing in the way of progress, when that is simply not true. With spring upon us, we are encouraged that the healing process can begin, and the teachers look forward to working together collaboratively with the board and admin to make the best decisions for all stakeholders involved. We ask that the first step in this rebuilding process is preserving our remote Mondays for the rest of this school year. It has been stated many times how important Mondays are to our remote students, to make them feel a part of the class and feel connected to their peers. Taking this away from our remote students sends a message that remote students don't matter. We ask the board to stand by our signed MOU and protect our Mondays. Thank you.
All right, no student learning, report that is, no student services report, got to be careful with that one. All right, on to business and finance.
Mr. President.
We have an action item, I believe, yes?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2021-22 student fees as presented.
Thank you, Erin, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. All right, Stacy.
The only change in the information from the fees from last time is we're still in the process of negotiating the transportation contract for next year, I hope to bring that to the April 29th board meeting for approval, so, again, we typically recommend that the paid rider fee increase at the same rate that the contract increases, so, again, it's not known at this time, but that my recommendation would be, we approve it to increase at that rate, otherwise, none of the other fees are being proposed to increase.
We talked about that last week, last month, feels like last week. All right, any comments or questions on finances, no?
Mr. President, I just have a, a quick comment about that. It was really good to learn, Stacy, from last time's meeting, and I just want to reiterate that, like you said, with student fees, as far as equity goes, if any family, because of COVID, can't make those student fees, that they can contact their schools and principals, and they do not, that, that accommodations would be made, so that, that's really good to know, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Anisha. All right, well then, so you have your mic on, once you start the voting.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
All right, student fees passes seven zero. Thank you, Stacy. All right, no report for facilities or personnel and planning, Brian's prepping his DJ work, I guess. On to the superintendent report.
So, this is the topic on diversity, equity, and inclusion, otherwise known as Policy 1:32. As a reminder, at the last meeting, the board did review a community member's request to add this to the agenda, and the board did determine that we would add it and look at the alignment of this policy and our practice. And so, there's a lot to share here, but I feel the best way I can kind of go through this is, is to talk through all of it. So, in terms of the alignment of our policy and practice, this is a review of all of the pieces that have got, have been happening, I guess, along the way. I'll share with you tonight the National Association of School Boards' equity statement. I'll share with you a reminder of the resolution affirming District 25 Board of Education's commitment to eliminate racial injustice that the board signed on July 16th of 2020. I'll share with you District 25 Board's diversity, equity, and inclusion policy that the board approved on August 13th of 2020. And I'll share with you what I believe is a very clear alignment to the proposed strategic plan that is also on the agenda this evening. So just as a point of reference, the National Association of School Boards has gone through its own journey on equity, and has established the following statement as a product of their journey. They state, "We affirm in our actions that each student can, will, and shall learn. We recognize that based on factors including, but not limited, to disability, race, ethnicity, and social economic status, students are deprived of equitable educational opportunities. Educational equity is the intentional allocation of resources, instruction, and opportunities according to need, requiring that discriminatory practices, prejudices, and beliefs be identified and eradicated." And again, I shared with you that I have a lot to read to you, and so I apologize for that, but I do think it's extremely important for us to review these documents that are a part of District 25's journey in aligning our policy and our practices. As I shared with you before, one of my proudest moments in my seven years here so far was the board's approval of the resolution affirming the board's commitment to eliminate racial injustice. I have that document that the board did approve in July of 2020, framed in my office. And that resolution shares, "Whereas the Arlington Heights School District 25 Board of Education is committed to ensuring public schools in Arlington Heights School District 25 provide safe and welcoming spaces where all students are able to focus on their education, secure in the knowledge that their safety and emotional well-being will be supported regardless of race. And whereas District 25 Board of Education recognizes that historical and ongoing systems of inequitable and inadequate resource allocation, punitive disciplinary practices, lack of access to and supports for teachers of color, unequal access to educational opportunities and supports, implicit bias, and segregation perpetuate inequity in the outcomes of students of different races. And whereas the recent killings of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and countless other black men and women, along with the backdrop of COVID-19 and its disproportionate impact on communities of color, provide an urgent reminder and rationale for the District 25 Board of Education to recommit on behalf of the state's education community to racial equity and justice. And whereas, the Arlington Heights School District 25 Board of Education appreciates the necessary and important work our public schools are doing to advance racial equity and justice, but is keenly aware that we and our schools can, with intentionality, do more. Whoops, sorry. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education, one, supports our courageous and committed district leaders, teachers, and students across the district who have been organizing and participating in peaceful demonstrations for substantive and lasting change; two, reaffirms its focus on developing and promoting district education policies that uplift, honor, and promote equity of opportunity for our communities of color; and identifying and dismantling any policies that implicitly or explicitly perpetuate, perpetuate institutional racism; three, recognizes our position of authority, will continuously check and question our biases, beliefs, and actions, and asks to be held accountable so that this long overdue transformation towards racial justice becomes permanent and normalized, and does not fade when this tragic and painful moment passes; and four, encourages all Arlington Heights School District 25 partners to join with us in a commitment to critically examine policies and practices with a racial equity lens, eliminate racial injustice, and as an important message to our community, adopt and publicly post resolutions affirming that commitment. So that was a strong step that the board took as a first step in making that resolution, and then creating a pathway for the adoption of a policy. And, and for the community's understanding, the board speaks direction to the staff through policy and through votes. And so when a, when a board adopts a policy, albeit broad on purpose, it's a directive then to the superintendent and staff to implement a policy moving forward. And so in August of 2020, the board did adopt this policy, again, I'll read it, and I'll try to highlight again why I believe we are in alignment from the resolution to the policy to the strategic plan that will come up later tonight. The diversity, equity, and inclusion policy says, "District 25 is committed to exploring and embracing diversity in our learning community. We believe that all members of the school community are responsible for advancing and understanding and cultivating respect for the dignity and uniqueness of every individual, and for fostering an inclusive environment. We define diversity as including people who are different from each other in a myriad of ways, including ability, race, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, religion, ethnicity, and culture. We recognize a person with cultural competence as one who shows respect for those differences, as well as for differences in thoughts, ideas, perspectives, and understandings. We affirm that developing the diversity of our community and the cultural competence of each person in it will improve access and equity for all our students, faculty, and staff, and strengthen their ability to thrive in a cul- thrive in a culturally diverse world. We commit to continuously improve our actions on diversity, equity, and inclusion, to addressing the hard questions with measurable impact, and implementing change that levels the playing ground for all of our students. District 25 will design and implement a curriculum to embrace and support diversity and cultural competence within our learning community, and invest financially to increase the diversity of our staff and recipients of our spending. The progress of diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives at School District 25 will be measured by the following. One, increasing inclusion of diversity actions in strategic plans and school budgets and executing on those actions, including promoting diverse hiring practices. Two, monitoring transparency and accountability among faculty, staff, parent organizations, and students, including through annual performance evaluations. And three, reporting of sustained improved outcomes on a year-over-year basis, including persons accountable. And therefore, that policy then was used with the group that came together to create the strategic plan that is on our agenda as well tonight. And just a portion of that strategic plan, that again, I believe aligns directly not only with the portion of the policy that says we're going to increase diversity actions in our strategic plan, but with many aspects of that policy and as well as the resolution affirmed by the board. The mission of, sorry, the vision of the district policy is to empower an inclusive, diverse community of learners to innovate and thrive as global citizens. And under that vision, we describe ways to do that. By cultivating a personalized environment of excellence that prepares every learner, every day, for a better tomorrow. By building the knowledge, skills, and attitudes of learners to be successful contributing citizens of a global society. By developing resilience and perseverance in learners to problem solve and co-create their learning. By embracing individuality and modeling empathy in an inclusive environment. By promoting learner confidence, courage, growth mindset, and well-being. And by fostering collaboration, voice, and engagement with and among staff, families, and our communities to partner in ensuring each learner's continuous improvement and ensuring equity of resources, access, and opportunities for all learners and staff to learn, work, and succeed. And also, as a part of that strategic plan, the board is aware the committee identified core values that we will continue to communicate about and reflect on, and that we'd follow these core values to guide our behaviors and our actions. And the core values established by that multifaceted committee include compassion and empathy, inclusivity and diversity, equity and social justice, innovation and creativity, collaboration and communication, resilience, and perseverance. And so, I talked through those documents tonight as the board, I think rightly framed this conversation about is there alignment between the board's policy and our practices. I believe strongly that there is. I believe that each step that we've been on so far in this journey has led directly to the next step. And I believe that the committee of parents and staff and community leaders and high school students looked at the board's policy specifically and referred to it many, many times as they reviewed and committed to the recommendation that they're making to you in terms of a strategic plan moving forward. I'm happy to answer any questions or address anything I might have missed.
Thoughts or comments?
Mr. President.
Laurie, thank you for taking the time to go through this. I think it was, you know, I think it was important to go through words, all the process and show that there is a flow through that process because I think maybe there was, in hearing some of the public comments, I think maybe there was some confusion as to why the policy was being, or why the process was being brought forward. And it was more of to have that dialogue, to hear it again, to really understand this is what we mean to go forward with. I think the piece that will continually bring up the conversation is how do we measure this? And that's the part where, you know, it's part of 132, and it's the important part because it's the first policy that's proactive versus our policies that are more reactive, meaning if someone feels that they've been wrong, there's a policy to address that. So this is a good progress forward and, you know, something that probably will come up before the board in terms of conversations continually.
Yeah, I'd actually like to just reiterate with Rich that I am thankful that, you know, folks felt strongly about it and came tonight and spoke about it. But again, I wish there, you know, I think, I believe that there was a little misconception that there was, that this was a pause or a revisiting of the policy. This is not an action item. This is a discussion item. This was at the request of a few individuals really that just thought, you know, and we talked about it in the previous meeting and thought it would be a good idea to not just review the policy, but in the manner that Dr. Byn did, all that went into it and how all of those different pieces were put into consideration in the strategic plan. So, I just feel remiss if we don't, you know, really address that, that there was never a thought of revoking anything, or pausing anything, or changing anything, or removing anything, or taking any steps backwards. This is, this statement, as Laurie stated, is somewhat vague intentionally because it is, you know, it is an edict, it is a credo, it is what we believe in our core values. So it's not, it's not an operational, you know, finite, definitive action thing that we're going to do X, Y, and Z. It's meant to be built into the DNA of what we are as a district, right? So, I really strongly encourage any board members, if you want to reiterate anything that we received, because we received some emails and the sentiment from most of the, actually, all of the emails and pretty much all the comments tonight certainly reinforce, I think, all the values that are in this policy. And I just wanted to overly clarify that.
I just want to thank Laurie for putting this, Dr. Byn putting this together. One thing I would agree with Rich on though, where I would challenge the board here, right, is the measures. Because it's great to put a policy together, but if we don't have measures that we can come back and say, here's what we did, right, and not putting it on Laurie, but like, hey, how are we improving on this? I think, to me, this should be something that we should be reading out on a regular basis in terms of what are the activities that we're doing? How are we trying to create this opportunity for people, right? What is, you know, because I want it more than to be words, right? And that's just my only, my, would be my only ask, is how do we put a measurement around this? And then, how do we make sure there's a report out on this, right? I mean, I'm not, you know, but just something we have to come up with because I think it's an important part for everybody. Because what I've heard from the community and everything is that, right, it's great. We've got it in words. It's in the policy. I think it's important, right? We're talking about how we make the opportunity. And like you said, we want it in the DNA, but we have to also have it show reflection within the DNA by having some sort of measurement or something of that nature.
Yeah. I think Rich is going to put together a rubric.
Well, no, but I agree. I mean, it's really, you know, this is, this is a put your money where your mouth is kind of a policy, right? So, the actions that come from it and continue to come from it, that's your measurement, right? That's, and, you know, at the, and the feedback that we continue to get, you know, through engagement through the community and, as we continue to implement pieces of this in different parts of our curriculum, of our communications, of our, again, you know, all that we are, our DNA.
Mr. President, so maybe on that point, when we're talking about measures, is then, you know, again, not putting Laurie on the spot, is then the intent that the measures would come along as we develop the action steps, you know, again, just following along the alignment with our strategic plan, would the measures come up from that? Or should we have some discussion here in the near term on some potential measure? So, you know, just let's put a bow on that to say, we plan to have our first measures sometime in the next, and I'm just throwing out a date, six months, or three months, or two months, or something of that nature.
So, again, I think when we, again, get to the next item on strategic plan, this is very well integrated throughout that as it should be integrated and not necessarily a now is diversity time topic. And so, those action teams that would be developed for each of those goals have a, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion piece that they will need to be incorporating into that goal and be reporting out on. Having said that, there will also be updates that don't necessarily wait for strategic plan update time, such as today. As you know, today, we had a voluntary professional development opportunity for staff and some board members who were able to join with Dr. Peary, talking about implicit biases and the impact on educator decision-making. And that was an extremely amazing experience and great engagement of the people that participated. And so, we'll continue to share those things and those kind of things that we're doing along the way. But I think strategic planning will also set a real nice format for us to have a continuous update and be able to share with you what those measurements are and how they reflect that policy and all of the pieces of the strategic plan that apply along the way.
Mr. President.
Yes, Anisha.
I'd like to add to the comments as well. No, thank you, Dr. Byn, for going over this in detail. And I like that in the points, in the presentation that you presented today, you know, one of the points, number three, states very clearly that we're asking to be held accountable. So, you know, and that that is a piece of board governance and that our community should always hold us accountable. And that when there are questions, either way of understanding, that those questions always come up. So, I really appreciate, and I know that my colleagues on the board really appreciate all the input and the heartfelt comments that were made today on whether the empathy of what happened in somebody's home, or whether there's confusion about terms, that we continue to have these open conversations. And the beauty of the strategic plan in education and in public schools, my understanding is I served on the strategic plan team, is that it is, had that diversity, equity, inclusion lens, and I encourage that it always has that lens because that is best practice for, to make sure that we serve all students. And that the beauty of it was the community input, right? So, we put this out to the whole community. We got input. This was not a solo project by anybody or the board or so forth. So, that was really great that we got the input and incorporated that. And the beauty of it was also the diverse stakeholders that were at the table, especially our students, who had amazing, rich insight to give us as graduates of District 25. And I, and as far as this continued parent education plan, of course, we have to, as our mission statement will show, continue to educate our students, but we also have to, as always, have a parent education piece to it. So, when I encourage, I said that last time, and for us to continue to do that because the questions that came today are important questions, and we acknowledge those questions. And a strategic plan is always there to be actualized into actions and accountability and goals. That is what a strategic plan is, and that it's always actionable and has measurable goals. And that's, so, we're going to continue to do that, and we should be held accountable. Our school system should be always held accountable as well. And lastly, I want to say, I have a question about this, is that, you know, the amazing graph, the infographic that Adam Harris and Mr. Riesing put together, is that accessible to the public yet?
Not yet because it's in draft form, but soon, when it will be finalized, we'll be sharing that often.
Okay. No, that's great because, of course, there's a lot of words on the slide, and sometimes it's hard from a helpful communication standpoint. Those, that infographic, I think, will really help the community understand even further the DEI lens, the action plans. I know it's really easy for me to look at it and kind of get information from it. So, it'll be great when, once that is public for the community in being helpful, you know, continuing to share helpful communication. So, thank you, and I really appreciate all the questions that came today and all the comments.
All right. Thank you, Anisha. Any other thoughts or questions? All right, let's move on. Here we are at the strategic plan. Do we want to review or take a motion? This is an action item. I need a motion.
Mr. President.
Yes, Erin.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the 2021 to 2025 strategic plan as submitted, and direct the superintendent to communicate the plan to the community, create action teams for each goal, and determine a consistent timeline for updating the Board of Education about the implementation of the plan.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Gina. All right, take it away, Dr. Byn.
So, you know, the board looked at the strategic plan in detail at the last meeting. Just a reminder that we had, we had finished the current, or the previous strategic plan in the spring of 2020. And as a reminder, the board knows that the last time we had a state audit, the largest highlight that the auditors gave us was that they saw the implementation of the strategic plan throughout the district as they were in schools, and that they felt it was something that we should be proud of. And I, and all of us in District 25 are committed to making this next strategic plan, something that also can be seen throughout our schools and throughout our community. And so, the team of 36 people who worked together over six months, I want to thank them for their commitment, many, many two-hour meetings, for their effort, for their true connection to what we were doing as we went through the process to bring us to the point of a strategic plan to recommend to the board. If the board approves this plan, we will continue our work. It has just begun. We'll be assigning a leader for each of the goals, determine beginning list of programs or actions that align with each goal, create action teams. Again, another opportunity for members of our community to join us in implementing these goals. We'll be soon communicating a timeline to the board so you will know when to expect updates on each of those goals. And we'll implement a communications campaign using, for example, the great visual that Adam and a parent in our district have created. We'll be sharing that with all constituents as well as updates. This strategic plan would be one that we believe would be in place when the board adopts it through the years of 2025, and would be, again, revisiting our progress throughout the way, throughout the time. So, again, thank you to all the strategic plan members who worked so hard. Thank you to Anisha, who served on that committee on behalf of the board. During a very difficult year, I will tell you that being a part of this process was inspiring, was uplifting, and helped us all find that connection of community that I know we're willing to extend past that committee throughout the Arlington Heights community moving forward. We believe this strategic plan that the committee has put together and is recommending to you will do just that. Will begin the healing for our community, and will truly give us the voice to work together to grow in all ways as we move forward. I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, the information that you have in your pocket is the same strategic plan details we went through at the last
Any thoughts on your review over the last month?
Mr. President.
Rich?
Yeah. I do have a couple of thoughts, and probably just maybe one for to maybe alter a word because I think it's important. So, in looking at this, and I'll focus in on goal three, I don't know if we could maybe bring bring it up, it might be easier to distract that way.
So just to make sure I'm looking, yeah, I'm going to look at this one to make sure I'm looking at the same one. Are you talking about the family and community goal?
Yes.
Okay. Fam, you want me to read that? I don't have it on a slide.
Oh, okay, no problem.
Okay.
So it talks about making sure that we strengthen family and community relationships. And then when we look at the two strategies, the first one talks specifically about families, and the second one, bullet points, talks about community agencies, higher education in District 214. And so what I'd offer is that, on that first bullet where it says, improve classroom, school, district connections, collaboration, and communication with our families, is really we alter that word families to be community. Because if the goal is community relationship, nowhere in the two strategies have we addressed truly the community.
We could make that adjustment if the board feels that will clarify the goal.
Any other thoughts?
We could say with our family than community.
Yeah, that would be fine. Okay. Then moving on to goal number four, and again, I'm probably reading too much into this, so bear with me just in that dialogue. So we start out, goal number four is attract, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality, and innovative employees. When I look at the strategies that are there with the first one being improved policies, procedure, and so forth, then refine and extend data, the part that I'm not necessarily seeing in those two strategies is how they align toward the attract word. So maybe I'm, again, maybe I'm just reading too much into it, or maybe too literally.
No, thank you. And that, just, you know, those strategies did, well, everything changed over time with the committee, but those strategies had some more specifics at one point. We decided those were more actions that we'd want the action team to look at, and that we wanted to be more broad by using the phrase improved policies, procedures, and practices. And then part of the action team then would determine what policies, procedures, practices would they put in place that would attract more candidates moving forward? As opposed to saying something like, incredi, you know, I'm sure many people are going to hear me say this and say, write that, instead of it saying something like, have higher salaries, have higher benefits, that the action team would come together to determine what procedures, practices with our employees would enhance our current relationships and attract additional diverse, high-quality employees.
Mr. President, sorry, one last.
Rich.
One last one on that. Same kind of thought process for then goal number five. And I'm, again, probably reading too literally with it, but just to have that conversation, just so we understand. Demonstrates stewardship by allocating resources effectively and equitably. When I look at the two, the first bullet point for the strategies seems to be addressing facilities. And then, but the second one, again, as I read it literally, it, when I hear, when I read the words financial strategies, to me, I'm thinking, it's not an allocation of resources that we're looking at or making sure that they're effective and equitable, it's trying to be creative, creative financing, maybe. And again, just so we can talk through that, just to make sure I'm not, I'm not misreading those words there.
Yeah, the intent to that, right? So explore and develop new financial strategies to respond to the changing nature of school funding and projections, to continue to offer equitable, high-quality programs and services to our students and families. So especially when you include the equitable allocation of those resources, it means that we might offer resources differently for one program or for a certain school to meet the needs of diverse learners that may attend through that program or through that school. So that therefore then increases the access to the opportunities we offer.
Good with that? Any other questions, comments? Anisha?
Yeah, I have a quick clarification question, Dr. Vine. You know, for the high-quality staff goal four, attract, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality, innovative employees, I'm wondering, in the strategy section, if the term, when it would say improved policies, procedures, and practices with our employees, or even the second one, I wonder if anywhere there, we could include the term, recruiting practices, because it sounds like, and I'm probably adding to what Rich is saying, that the strategy, because the goal is talking about attracting, developing, retaining, right? But the strategies is not talking about recruiting practices. So I'm not sure if we could possibly add the term that we revisit or look at recruiting policies and practices.
Sure, so again, the goal does, right? The goal talks about attracting, developing, and retaining, you know, diverse, high-quality, innovative employees. We could add to that first strategy, something like improved policies, procedures, and practices, including hiring practices. Is that okay?
That, yes, I think that's a great idea.
Any other comments, questions, observations? Okay.
So I think we need a vote, right?
Yeah.
And I will, and I'm, just for clarification, I am, I am hearing that the recommendation that was made as submitted with the discussed changes would be what the vote relates to, right?
Correct. Yep. Forgot who made the motion, but let's start down. Rich?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, strategic plan passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Yes. Both worth a clap. All right. First reading of policies, am I in the right spot here?
Yeah, you are. Just a couple of policies for your review. With the adoption of the strategic plan, it impacts these specific policies. One, colon, 30, that talks about the district philosophy, it now changes that to include the new mission of the district, and the same change to policy six, colon, 10. It's simply updating it with the new mission of the strategic plan. And so we would bring these back to the board at the next meeting for a second reading and approval.
Okay. Any comments or questions on those word changes or implications of them? No? Okay. On to item D, communications review. Mr. Adam Harris is in the house.
So every year, Adam updates the board on the communications department. Oh, thank you, sorry. You'll remember, a couple of years ago, well, several years ago, he created a very extensive communications guide, and a couple of years updated that and shared it with the board as recently as last June. And so he's going to kind of do an update with you now, especially as during the last year of the pandemic, communications has been a continual topic we've also heard about. He wanted to make sure the board was up to date with what his department has been doing and will be doing as we move forward.
Okay, great. It's a nice audience for me today, this is cool. So, okay, communications in District 25. This is a visual of what I presented to you guys last year. I believe it was in June, the updated communications guide in 2015. I created a communications guide and have updated it since. Last year really leaned into the update as well and presented it. So I just thought this was a good opportunity, as Dr. Vine said, to just kind of touch base again with you on what we do in communications. It was a good exercise for me as well, putting this presentation together. So let's go on to slide two. There we go. So our department mission is very important to me, I've thought about it a lot, and I'm just going to read it and then talk about it. We tell the everyday story of our district by opening the window to the classroom from a place of vulnerable presence and personal connection in order to best engage our community and create community using all viable communication tools, tactics, and strategies. We also create the space needed for our staff and teachers to fearlessly communicate by promoting vulnerability and authenticity as the key to communication, which leads to connection, which leads to connection, right? So everything that we're doing when we communicate, the end goal is creating connection back and forth between the community and our teachers, our students and our teachers, our families, and our buildings itself. And that is something that's really important to our department. We do it through vulnerability presence, through really promoting fearless communication, being the teacher and staff member you came here to be, and then communicating as the staff member and teacher that you came here to be, which creates a very personal connection to the students and also to the families and parents. And I've seen that in many ways that I'll describe. So storytelling is something that I've added to my title because I really believe in it. It's something that has been evolving over the last few years, and I really have a lot of pride in telling our story through individual tiny stories going on in the buildings and in the classrooms throughout the school. Storytelling leads to connection. That's how we all connect with one another, whether it be on a grand basis where you're throwing something out on social media, it resonates with people as individuals, it connects individuals to individuals. People connect and relate with one another based on story. The classroom is very different than the last time a lot of people were in it as students. I realized that when I first got here, and that was something that inspired me to be like, okay, we need to start showing, just straight up showing what's going on. So I've been talking to new teachers every single year and putting on a monthly training to new teachers and to any teachers that want to, and then at share 25, talking about storytelling being available to teachers and staff members that want to tell stories in their classroom. It's really allowing that space for students to connect with their community, teachers and staff members to connect with their community. Things going on in the classroom are really important and personal to our staff members and teachers. That's something that's evident as I'm around in the buildings, and that's our story, and that's what we've been going with. Videos, articles, pictures, interviews, it can be done in so many different ways, obviously creating that connection. And also this past year, actually, I want to say one more thing, this past year, I've been really proud that we're still telling our story. We, I have not been able to be in buildings as often as I normally would be. A lot of times, my day, just to let you know, would be getting off the train, getting on my bike, and going right to a building and working from there in the front office, and then going into a classroom and seeing what's going on and telling a story. That hasn't been, just like a lot of us have altered how we've been doing our jobs, but we've still been telling our story through this past year. And I think that that's something I'm really, really proud of, that everything that's been going on in this, in this community and in our district, and it's just we're still telling the stories from our students. Our students are getting on Zoom with me and getting on Zoom with their teachers and telling their story, and I've been really proud of that. And one last thing on storytelling. It is more, is about more than just us. This is an example of a post that I did. Thomas Middle School does the Pride of the Wolfpack ceremony once a year, where they honor a collegiate athlete, musician, or someone that went to college and did something in the performing arts, or did something on the athletic field, comes back to Thomas and speaks to the, to the students about it. And we put together a video for this person. Heather is a teacher at Thomas, came back to Thomas, you know, after she went and played tennis, put a video together, put it online, and just see what happens. Seventy-one likes. What was that, that number down there? Twenty-seven comments. And they're all, they're like, we didn't ask for comments, these are all people in our community that were like, Heather, great job, oh my God, that's amazing, so great. Like, it's really impactful words directed toward Heather, but also our teachers and staff see it, our community sees it. It's a place for our community to connect with one another online in a very positive, uplifting way. I believe that when people go, what district should I go to? They Google, they go to our website, and they get a feel of who we are, they go to our Facebook, and they get a feel of who we are immediately, and this is something that really shows who we have been and who we are. And along with all that stuff, with storytelling and connecting through story and creating that community online, there's a lot of strategic ways that we communicate with our community. So I'm going to talk about that now for the, for the remainder of this presentation. Our direct-to-parent communications, just to kind of outline again how we are communicating in a structured way with our, with our parents and with our families. The District Dish is a newsletter that goes out as of recent, it's been once a month, and it is a place, it's a online newsletter emailed to our parents, and it's recapping things that they need to know, it's reminders. I'm going to tell you exactly how that gets compiled. That is a situation where I'll be just going about my day, and I'll notice something that is mentioned in a meeting that I've had with my fellow cabinet members, that I go, oh, that should be in the next District Dish. Or a department head comes in and says, hey, I need to communicate, and I need to let my community know about X, Y, and Z. And I take it and process it and go, okay, that sounds like a dish, something to drop in the District Dish, when does it need to go out by? I get a date, and then I go, okay, that's probably our target date for our next District Dish. Again, in the past couple of months, there's been a lot of news that we've been wanting to communicate to our community, so it's been going out once a month. And it's a great place to compile a bunch of stories rather than, or not stories, compile a bunch of information, rather than getting some information from a department head or from a department that we need to get out to our community, that they need our community to know, and hitting them with emails like every couple of days. If it's something that is a message that they can, that we can wait on, that is something that they can get in a newsletter form, it's a way to compile it, and it is available on our website, sd25.org/districtdish. And in the last year, with as many COVID updates as we've had, nurse updates that we've had, meeting changes and meeting adjustments, it has been a good place to compile it, embed it into an email, and send it out to the community, so it's not something that, my goal is to not, to make it so that when people get an email from us, it's not white noise. It's something that they're able to know, okay, I'm going to skim through this and links to take them to more information, and that's what the District Dish does. The Board Buzz has evolved since we've started doing it. I really like where it's going. It's, it's a place, so it's, again, it's a newsletter form that we email to our community the following week of the board meeting, the week following the board meeting. And what's really been nice lately about the Board Buzz is we're able to recap the meeting in a digestive format, where people can see bullet points, go to topics, see what happened at the meeting, and if they want more information on that particular topic, there's direct links to that exact point in the meeting where they can click, and it goes right to that point. This is what was, public comment happened at this point, click here to watch the full public comment. Adam Harris made a presentation about communications, click here to download the PDF, click here to watch the presentation, click here to see board discussion of the presentation, and it directs them to the exact moment of that in the meeting. And I think that's evolved over time to become something very useful, especially with these meetings where lots getting done, which is awesome, and it's helpful for our community to digest it in that way. It's available under the school board area on our website and at sd25.org/BoardBuzz. The updated ones up there and an archive of them is on the website as well. Let me look through that. Let me look through that. Yeah, okay. And all this stuff is in the Communications Guide, which is available on our website as well, under the Communications Department. Principal Communications. I would like to just take this opportunity to like, say thank you to our principals for their dedication to communication. They communicate consistently and the same way. Some weekly, the elementary schools are all doing it weekly. Principals send out a weekly either newsletter or blog or something that their community is familiar with and that they're familiar with. And the middle schools are communicating 15th and 30th for South and every other week for Thomas, so twice a month basically for each of them. And the principals are super dedicated to making sure that the community is aware of what's going on in their schools, and the content of that message from them is a lot of school things that they can update them on. Calendar updates, lunch reminders, different things that are going on in the school, school specific things. And then, what's also awesome is they're so, they're gracious with their space, and if the district has something that we need to put in there that necessarily wouldn't, that would be, that has gone out in a letter or gone out in the dish, but we need to hit it again, we can drop them a note, and they insert it in there every single time. So, that's consistent communication from our principals outlined in the Communication The website was something that I really dove into, especially these two sections on the site in the past six months or so. The COVID Hub and the School Board area. Those used to be dropdowns on our website, and I have taken away the dropdowns, and I've made them so that they are just one-click areas for people to go. They, they go to our website and they go, I want to know something about the School Board. No matter what it is, they click School Board, or they click COVID Hub for any COVID information, and I'll show you what the dropdowns are. For the COVID Hub, you click there, and then those are the dropdowns that, that come up. And it's just an easier way to navigate, I think. Each one of those pages has all the information you would need, all the letters that have been sent by Dr. Vine, updating COVID, all the letters sent by the nurses, updating anything from COVID. That is where you would find all things COVID. Our screener, our dashboard, our metrics, our return-to-school plan, and then the same thing with the School Board Hub. Hang on. See if this clicks over. It went too far. Click it forward once. Thanks. Okay, so, that's another example. That's, that's what comes up when you click School Board. Meetings catch up here. That's where all the Board Buzzes are. That's where the videos, the recorded videos are from the board meetings. That's where the minutes are. That's where the highlights are. Board agendas and presentations, that's where the agendas and the presentations from the board meeting are. Board policies are right there, and the board overview, that's where your pictures are. That's where the meeting dates are, things like that, is the board overview. All right, let's see. There we go. And then, throughout this past year, Dr. Vine has been working with me, I've been working with her, and we've been emailing the community a lot more than, than we had in the past, obviously, for obvious reasons. And all of those letters for COVID updates are on our website under the COVID Hub and under Letters. There's a little tab that says Letters. They're delivered via email to our staff and parents and the Board of Education, written when there are changes, updates, adjustments, and news, obviously especially involving COVID. They're delivered to our community in Spanish and in Polish, and they're archived under the COVID Hub on our website. That's just a couple of screen grabs, just so you can see what it looks like when they're archived. They're available in those three languages and details of what those letters are about, because some of them are pretty extensive. The goal is to not to overwhelm people when they receive all this communication. I feel like it's tough to do right now, but I just want you to know that that is the goal. It's, it's, it's an overwhelming time to receive information, and the goal every time Dr. Vine and I sit down is to articulate a letter that is comprehensive, allows people to dive as deep as they want, but also walk away with surface-level information if that's what they want. Like, is my kid going to school on Tuesday? Yes or no? You know, yes. And then, from there, if they want to dive deeper, they can. So, moving forward, this is, you know, my favorite part of the presentation, I guess, because, besides storytelling, obviously, but this past year has caused a lot of, it's allowed me to reflect so much on communications. It's, it's, it's a time to really just look at like, okay, how can we communicate in a different way to impact people more efficiently? So, I've looked at it, and I've thought, okay, more consistent and active on Facebook and Twitter. I really believe that people can be peppered with reminders there without feeling overwhelmed. That's a social media site, and we've built our, our following based on our storytelling, so we could use it even more when things are changing, and reminders and things on, on Facebook and Twitter. I've spoken with Dr. Vine about this, and we've thought of an idea, this Live with 25, an hour, once a week on Zoom, where I would be the driver of the conversation, and yeah, Dr. Vine would be on, or if any of my colleagues, if there's like an information that they might have for the, for the community, and the, and the goal would be to be accessible to the community without it, without, you know, us just popping up at the board meetings once a month, or Dr. Vine has Open Door as well. This, now, learning from COVID, we've learned that we can connect with people virtually, and so this is just an opportunity to do that. The basic structure, give a state of the district, where we are as the district. I ask some questions that, you know, maybe people have submitted via Twitter that I've noticed have been kind of going around and trying to shore up some things, and then I can take questions. We did this, if you remember, when we, when we were moving to our hybrid format back in October, we did this with our principals, and it was really, really cool. Our principals, assistant principals, nursing staff, and then one driver from the admin office, and I did two of them, and it was really cool. Like, the community got on, we did a discussion, I was able to drive it, here's some key questions, and then I was able to filter the questions, give them to the experts, and the experts were able to answer just an hour, you know, and like, maybe at the beginning we'll have a bunch of people, maybe after 45 minutes we have nobody on there, but I still think just knowing that we're sitting there waiting for an hour, just available virtually, I think that's, that's going to be cool and impactful.
You should do it with a Merv Griffin setting like they do on Sci-Fi.
That, I would love. A hundred percent.
Play some music?
Yeah, right. Play the music. Come on down, Dr. Vine. Yeah, right.
I love that. That's awesome.
And then also, I'm working with Lana O'Brien and Dr. Vine to review the alignment of the board highlights and the Board Buzz. Something that Lana puts together is the board highlights, and I put the Board Buzz together, and we've noticed, hey, we're kind of doing the same thing, and so we're working to kind of, yes, align those. And the last thing, I'll get us back into our fields a little bit. The communication here is, is super personal. I mean, everything that we're doing as a district is personal, and I know I keep saying that over and over. The reason why, the reason why in this past year people have had so much passion is because it is so personal to them, and so that is not lost, and that is not lost in our department as well. I want people to understand who works here, who are our teachers, who are our administrators, our students, what motivates us, what motivates this community, and those are things that can be communicated through story and through our direct-to-parent communications, which I've just outlined, and that are in our Communications Guide. So, thank you for your time, and that's my presentation.
Mr. President. Thank you, Adam. I just wanted to, I don't even think this is going to go anywhere, because I encourage you to, to continue to be innovative, and I don't think you need encouragement because you're taking it to the next level. I just want to, the Board Buzz is a, is a prime example of, of the way that you, you take it to the next level. Anyone, I think the board, we, we agree that we want to continue this, this concept of the, the board being publicized and being in a platform that, that can be reviewed later on or seen, and you taking the Board Buzz and piecing it together so people can pick out certain aspects that they're interested in. Personally, I, I find that valuable because I've tried to navigate, you know, the slide bar on YouTube, trying to, oh, did I, oh, you know, and then giving up by taking and doing what you're doing. I think it really streamlines the information. You mentioned white noise. That's, that's a good, a good way to put it, where you're making the, the information meaningful to people that are looking for what they're, I guess, looking for. So, I thank you for all, all that you do, and keep, keep doing it and taking it to the next level. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That, that, it is always evolving, because like, two months ago, that's not what the Board Buzz was like, you know, and so I think that is an important thing to kind of let you all know and let the community know, is like, communication is constantly evolving, and when I do get feedback, I'm like, okay, yeah, like, that could have been different, and it could have been more efficient or whatever, and so thank you for recognizing that, but yeah, it's an example of how communication is always evolving.
Adam, your work is much appreciated by all of us, I know. I just, I was thinking, as I was listening to you talk tonight, about how positive and influence, or so much positive messaging can be done with social media, and it made me think about how much negative information has been distributed in the same means over this time, and it made me wonder, without Facebook, just Facebook, would our community be so divided right now? I, I just want us all to kind of think about how we use these tools, and maybe we could use our, our powers for good rather than for destruction. So, thank you for your continued efforts. Obviously, you are the most positive person we could possibly ask to fill this role, and I really do appreciate that.
Thanks.
Yes, I echo that. I was thinking about it as we're, you know, we, we get our board packets in the same order for common sense reasons as the, as they're presented tonight, right? So, this was kind of the latter part of what I was reviewing throughout the last week, and I was just kind of reflecting on it. I mean, and, you know, it just kind of hit me. I was like, the communications document and, and plan is a 25-page, right, document on how we communicate, right? That's larger than some small company's business plan, right? And so, that's, that just speaks to, to the job that, that you and everyone on the team is doing, and that, that evolution of, of, you know, helps us, hopefully, will help us even further, to Aaron's points, just have that sense of community and that sense of transparency and openness, and, you know, it's hard. Like, you know, I look at tonight, this whole DEI topic was, you know, kind of misunderstood a little bit, and I don't, you know, I think things like the efforts that you're doing and the more open we can be can only improve situations like that and, and others. But thanks for all you do, and Lori for all you direct and do, and everything that the staff does is from a communications perspective.
Thanks.
Very thorough.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Lights everywhere.
Thank you, Adam Harris. There was a, thank you for kind of going through it and kind of reminding us, because there are so many pieces to this puzzle, and the thorough document that we as a board got beforehand as well, and so it's a good recap for the board and a good recap for the whole community. And I think there, like you said, communication is evolving, and there's silver linings to this pandemic, that now this idea is just incredible, live with 25, Facebook Live, and then folks, as far as being transparent for the whole community, then, that right there, we can ask the superintendent, ask superintendent questions, and then you can feed them, and I think that, that idea is really great as far as we want to continue as a board to have open communication and transparency and accountability, and so that, that's a fantastic idea. And even the idea, I'm, I'm glad my colleague said, as far as now we can have virtual open doors, so that, so if families can't get away from their little ones, Zoom is the way. So, like our little speaker said today, you know, Zoom is not always for the classroom, and that is really hard for our young students, but it may make it easier for our parents to communicate. I have a question, Adam. You talked a little bit about it as far as the information overload, right? So, so I'll just take myself, for example, and there's a lot of mothers and fathers in the community and grandparents and guardians, right? So, you have multiple children, and then there's emails coming from principals and teachers, and then there's a Board Buzz and District Dish, and then weekly videos. So, is information overload a real thing, and you, and how, how should we as a community kind of funnel this? Because even when I go to the website, and while you were talking, I was at the website, and you were talking about the Board Buzz and District Dish, but still having a hard time finding all these different elements on our website. So, I'm not sure if there's still a way to simplify all this so it's easily, that we can easily find it. So, just questions that I'll kind of put out to you. And then this, how to make emails, and this email communication we've had, especially this year, there's really long emails that kind of go over a plan, and all the information is very, very valuable. It's hard sometimes, it's busy parents, to go through a really long email, and how do we make that multimodal so that transition plans and really important things that parents want to know can be in video format? And so, maybe your Live with 25 will kind of address that piece. I'm kind of throwing a lot at you, and these are just like thoughts at the top of my head, but it, we want to continue to drive helpful communication in our district. You are the right person, like Aaron said, and you're an award-winning communications person, so we'll encourage you and urge you that, all that you're doing is so, so appreciated, and during COVID, when it's such an overwhelming time for the community, to just kind of keep going with that. So, so I know, I'm kind of talking about it, this communication piece, there's a lot of information out there, and how to continue to simplify it for, for busy parents that we have, so just some thoughts.
Yeah, no, and, and I, while I don't have like a answer to how, like, we can make it immediately, like tomorrow, less obtrusive for parents to gather all this information, I promise you that when, that is something that, as we keep evolving, and as communications keeps evolving, and as I keep connecting with my colleagues in different districts, I'm noticing like tips and things and ways that they're making it more digestible for our parents, right? It's, like, I even just learned of a new app that we can put on our website that I put on this past Thursday, which is like an alert bar at the top, and it just says, this is where we are for COVID, and our in-person learning is four days a week right now, and if you want to know more about COVID, click here. And so, like, I just learned of that this past week. So, that is a goal of mine every time we put together a communication, and that's top of mind. How do we make this digestible for our community?
You, you said it perfectly. I think that is the word, digestible, you know, making the complex simple and digestible. So, so thank you. I know you're on top of it, 100%. So, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Rich?
Adam, again, you know, obviously, thank you for all the work that you've been doing here from the first time you and I connected on the train.
Oh, that's right.
Exactly. So, I was shocked to see you there, so that was great, great communication. A couple of thoughts, just maybe echoing some of the themes that we've heard about. I know we focus a lot on social media. I just looked, we have about 3,000 followers on our Facebook, which kind of implies that there are folks and parents and community members that aren't on Facebook and aren't on Twitter, and, and this, that, and the other, all the TikTok and all these other things. So, how do we, you know, leverage this, other than just emails, to get that message out to not only those family members, to the broader community that aren't on Facebook and News Now and all these other forums? So, how would we do that, or how does that plan? Because I don't know if that plan addresses that.
Yeah, like, reaching the 80% that don't send kids to our school, is that what you're saying? Yeah. So, it, it, that is mess, that to me is message-based. What is that community, not need to know, but what is of interest to, to that part of the community? So, yearly, we do send out a Insight Magazine. We did not last year as COVID hit, and it was something that we were not able to put our time and effort into, but we will this year. And yearly, we send out an Insight Magazine that gets mailed to every single home in the district that has a piece in it from, and representation from all of our schools, but also from each one of our departments. And we have, Stacy's been featured in it a couple of times. That's pretty cool. And just, we have things that are, we have a curriculum section in there. We have a business section in there. We have facilities section, especially as we were building out our schools the past, like three years ago or two years ago. So that is one way. We hit that, that, that 80%. The other way is it's organic through Facebook. And I know that that is not the ideal answer that you're looking for, but it is organic through Facebook. As people are, as we are telling our stories, I, I, we are gaining followers by the week. When I first started our Facebook page and started to put effort into it, this was four years ago, five years ago since I got here, there was like, I think like 200 followers. And what's happening is that is growing over time, growing organically. And I know, I mean, that's, that's pretty, that's, that's pretty good growth. We are a 5,500 student, nine-school school district here in Arlington Heights. And as that grows, people click share, people click follow, and I'm getting followers throughout that. But then again, it is message-based. Like what does that community want to know? Like when we're putting together our Insight magazine, I'm going, okay, they're going to want to know what's going on in our business department. They're going to want to know what's going on in our, building our schools and what is that costing them? And what are the numbers of our district? So that's the message that goes out in that Insight magazine to them.
Related, related to that, Rich, I'll just add, Adam is taking the initiative to lead a project that we're beginning to work on with the Chamber of Commerce, where we are talking about how the chamber that now extends into Palatine, Rolling Meadows and Mount Prospect and all of our village entities, the library, the park district, the school district can collaborate on communication that can reach all of those constituents. So that's a beginning process. And the Chamber Executive Director, John Riddler, and I talked about it and we both instantly said the person who would be best to lead this would be Adam Harris. So that process is just beginning.
Great. That, I mean, that inner type of agency is, is great to hear. Just a couple more, Adam.
Uh huh.
So kind of tagging along with Anisha was saying, we're, we're giving a lot of information to the community or to our families. But one of the things, you know, that seems to be a lot of one-way communication. Where's that, the engagement coming back that elicits the, the immediate engagement, the immediate type of, of feedback that we need? Now, I know later on you talked about the Zoom session, which is great, but you know, oftentimes that requires someone to, again, have the, the gumption to say, okay, I'm, let me get onto Zoom, let me ask that question versus different ways that we can get that community feedback. You know, some method, you know, and I'm kind of even thinking maybe the net promoter score or get some type of community feedback right away where we can then be adapting and understanding if our message is clear, is it getting out there? Do they understand or is there something more that they need to, to have to be able to work with?
Yeah, like tying up loose ends of anybody that's like, has a quick question or had, needs, needs feedback on something that's going on, like that type of.
But even, again, when I think of the net promoter score, you think of, you know, when you get an email, especially like some of the communications that went out, is it's quick to get, to solicit feedback right away that says, was this message concise? Did you get the information you needed?
Okay.
And that's just a click, yes, no. And so you get this immediate feedback.
Yes.
And you can now start adapting the message based on what you're hearing. Because, you know, we may type something up and think, oh, it's perfectly clear to us, but it may not be to me. So.
Yeah, yeah. That's not something we do right now. And that's interesting. I, I actually think that that would be worth me asking my colleagues about too, like in different districts, to see if that's something that they do. I can post that to our, our board tomorrow and start, because that's a good idea. That's, that's, you know, a quick, how was this message? You know, if you have any feedback on this message or, yeah, I think that's interesting. So thank you for that.
All the buzz in corporate America.
Is it?
Oh, God, yeah. It's my whole job.
Mr. President.
I can feed you plenty of net promoter score information and interview Rob Markey, who invented it. Yes.
Adam, I like the way that this is, has started to evolve and you're doing a really good job. Camping on to a couple of things that have, have come up that I think would be interesting. There might be interesting connectivity to what Dr. Vine mentioned about working with some of the other community groups. And I think it would be very opportunistic to take a look at increasing two-way communication through some of these other vehicles. The piece of it that I think is part of what you're hearing in corporate buzz, part of what we're hearing in two-way communication is really making sure, and we had an example of it here tonight, really making sure that what we communicate is landing the way we're intending it to land. So yes, there's a lot of information out there. Yes, we have to think about how do we be succinct? But we also need to be thinking about how do we land that information? So I think that the policy and the thought process around the policy on the diversity, equity, inclusion conversation that we had and the community feedback we had here showed that we as a board didn't land something very well in our last board meeting. So there, there are opportunities and I think that that second feedback mechanism could be something that could be very useful for us as a district, us as a community, us as a board. It would also give the opportunity to hear more voices. So as you, as you take a look at that, that would be something that I think would be very valuable to everybody.
Excellent. I also, and this, this is not taking care of what you guys are saying, but I, I also didn't mention this, we have a, we have a chat function on our website that I monitor too. That is, is operated by me and I have an app on my phone. So it'll be like, you know, Saturday and I'll just be like hanging out and I'll get a chat from someone. And it's, it's, it's often like they just need like a quick answer, you know? Or sometimes it's, it's, it's a parent from another country that's moving over here that isn't comfortable picking up the phone. And that's something where they're able to communicate pretty quickly, like how do I get my child registered? And so there is a chat function that I monitor that is on our website, just like a lot of companies have with feedback on, like, things like that. So just, that's another thing. It's not taken care of exactly. What I'm hearing is, is feedback, but it's, it's something.
Curious. Does the chat feature come with multilingual compatibility? So to your point, if somebody has a question.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check that out.
Mr. President, I have a final question for Adam. So is there a way we can clone you? Because you have a lot on your plate. You're, I believe you're a one, I know you're a one-person department, correct? You have a lot on your plate and we are very grateful and we have to figure out how to clone you. There's a lot of pieces that you're working on, so it's really appreciated. And when you said you're on Saturday doing, basically, you know, like, so would like you to enjoy your Saturdays?
Yeah, no, yeah. I, I wasn't saying that to be like martyrish. I was just kind of saying like, it's just, it's, it's just, it is what, I mean, I don't know, I'm attached to my phone and like it's how I communicate at, at my, like, age, so.
So we'll have to chat about work-life balance, but, but thank you for all you do and we have to figure out how to clone Adam Harris now.
I do think like it is, it is something where the, the chamber, collaborating with the chamber and utilizing like our library and our park district and like we're all trying to communicate to the same people. That is, that excites me. And yes, it is something that is big picture and it takes, it's, it's a big, it's a, it's a big undertaking, you know? And, and I think that this past year, it's, it's been something where, okay, we're like daily trying to figure out how to communicate like what's going on in our buildings at a, at a building level. And so I'm excited that it feels like that's lifting a little bit and then my attention can go a lot more towards like the bigger picture things. Thank you all.
Yep, thank you, Adam. All right. Item E, transitional model of reopening. Hope you're going to present right.
So, trying to update on our process of the year. Thank you. A reminder, these are the steps we had originally communicated in June of 2020. And as you know, we started the year in remote learning. We moved to gradual return into a hybrid learning model and into our current kind of step four. Where all students who have chosen in-person are in-person learning Tuesday through Friday. And along the way, our families who have chosen remote learning are able to continue that as well. So tonight, I'm going to talk very briefly about planning for April 26th through the end of the school year. But I'm going to spend most of the night talking about the 21-22 school year. Something really important for me to share with you is that we are expecting in mid-April revised public health guidance from the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education. And that guidance for schools is what we understand going to address ISBE and IDPH's thoughts for schools to consider for the 21-22 school year. So I'm going to share with the board tonight what our plan is for next year. But it's important to know that when that guidance comes out, we need to also consider that and make any adjustments that are required at that time. And on May 3rd, we will be opening registration for the next school year. And that will include access to our parent-student handbook and any plans specific to the unique situation that we're in for 21-22. So we'll have that information out to families so that when we open registration on May 3rd, they know what kind of environment they are registering for. And I'll talk more about that as we move forward. But before I talk quite extensively about the 21-22 school year, I want to do a quick reminder on the rest of this year. At the last meeting, the board had a discussion reviewing some new data from our families. That new data being that 85% of our students were coming to in-person learning as we returned from spring break. And 15% of our students were continuing in the remote learning environment. And with that data, the board, we had quite a discussion about, does that change our format? That currently is Mondays remote and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the combination of both in-person and remote happening at the same time. And through that discussion, the board did ask me to reach out to our teachers and to work towards providing in-person learning also on Mondays. I asked for us to do that, to give us some time and to target date that for April 26th as we needed time to schedule a lot of assessments that already been planned, reschedule some IP, a lot of IP meetings, find substitutes, and give our teachers an opportunity who are, have already grouped their students for small group instruction on Mondays to be thinking about how that might impact their ability to move forward. And so as we look to, we look to adding in-person learning on Mondays, I just want to make sure that I share with our community that that does mean some changes in what you may be used to in terms of the instruction that's happening with our kids on Mondays. Because of that remote format, our teachers are able to do extensive small group instruction, one-on-one instruction. And so that type of instruction is going to change if we are in-person on that day. And I don't want our parents or to be surprised and feel like the teachers aren't doing the level of instruction that they've come to expect. And so more important that I'm the one that says, you may see some change in the level of instruction teachers are able to do without that Monday remote option. I know that we'll continue to look at that. But at this point, I did hear loud and clear from the board the interest in adding that in-person learning and targeting April 26th. But mostly tonight, I want to talk through the 21-22 school year. We plan to return to what we would all consider a more typical experience in 21-22, including that our early childhood programs would return to their full Monday through Thursday schedule. Our kindergarten students would return to their five-day in-person instruction in their half-day format. Our kindergarten programs that are currently full-day programs that we have in the district would continue to follow that full-day format on five days that they are used to when we start the new school year. Our first through eighth grade students would attend school five full days per week. All student programs, including our extracurricular activities, would return to functioning as we have experienced in the past. We would be utilizing lockers for our middle schools. And our PE locker rooms would be used at the middle schools as well. There are some exceptions to what we all consider a more traditional school year. Students who have elevated health risks or live with others who have elevated health risks may choose a remote-only program. Now I want to be clear that at this point, this is a mandate from the Illinois State Board of Education that school boards offer a remote option for students with elevated health risks or for those who live with family members who have elevated health risks. And we need to implement, implement that mandate. Having said that, as I said earlier, we are expecting in the next week or so, updated guidance from the State Board of Education. It is likely that that mandate will no longer exist in the new updated guidance. So that's where we need to consider that guidance and adjust accordingly. If we do offer an option for remote learning next year, that program will be taught separately from in-person learners. Many people call that remote academy. So if we have a remote option, it would be separate from our current in-person option. Class sizes may vary depending on enrollment, but we would look to use our typical class size guidelines the best that we can to build those remote classes as well. And if that choice is offered, it would be in place until vaccinations are available for our grade-level students. Of course, if we have students, even when vaccinations are available, who medically cannot attend school, we have always had and would continue to have our homebound tutoring opportunity for students. And students who do choose to be in a remote option next year, if we're able to offer it, would be allowed to transition back to in-person at the grading period if their individual health risk is mitigated. So we wouldn't be asking students or families to commit to remote learning for an entire year. We would be asking them to commit to a grading period, so that's trimesters at the elementary level, quarters at the middle school. And if their individual risk is mitigated or if vaccinations are available when that next grading period starts, they would transition to in-person learning. Some courses may not be, be able to be offered in remote learning or may be offered by a third-party provider. In general, there'd be a combination of courses taught by District 25 employees who we would hire specifically for the remote experience. But also there may be some third- hire specifically for the remote experience, but also there may be some third-party providers, possibly a foreign language program could be offered that way. And there could be also another program that the high schools, and they now have expanded to the middle school, could be used, is the Illinois Virtual Schools. We're reviewing that and making sure that any courses that we would offer through the Illinois Virtual School System would be approved at the high school, especially if we're talking about advanced programs or world language programs. Some other exceptions, all staff and students who would be on-site will continue to wear masks until the Centers for Disease Control determines that masks are no longer necessary. We would continue our frequent hand washing throughout the school day. Physical education will resume normal instruction, including changing into uniforms at the middle school level, but masks will be required unless students are outside and six-foot distance. Contact tracing will continue according to the Illinois Department of Public Health's current guidelines at the time. Currently, the Illinois Department of Public Health's guidelines for contact tracing continues to say if anyone is within six feet, even if they are masked, they are considered a close contact. Some other exceptions for the school year next year, recess will resume our normal procedures, but masks will be required unless students are outside, and we know that six-foot distancing can be maintained. Students and staff will continue to be asked to self-certify using the current IDPH health screener. Visitors to our buildings will need to wear masks at all times, again, until the Centers for Disease Control determines masks are not necessary. Social distancing standards for adults will be followed. For example, current social distancing for adults says six feet for unvaccinated adults. Our lunch procedures are still to be determined, so we will have lunch, but whether it will be under the current federal guidelines where a free lunch option is provided for all students and the lunches that our food service department does on Wednesdays for those who pick up breakfast and lunch for the week, or whether we'll return to a more normal lunch option where you have the option to purchase different items, that we are still waiting on final USDA determination for that. We will let people know that they should assume our students will continue to see various forms of PPE being used by different staff members, face shields, dividers for some small groups, gowns and goggles by our nurses. At this point, we expect those will still exist in the new school year. We may also have some One Direction markings for certain hallways or areas of the school to help with traffic flow and distancing. In order to address the next school year, especially if we are going to have remote learning options, we expect, and I believe, just so that the board knows, that this is a high estimate. And I've been watching all of the school districts around us as they talk about the same thing at their board meetings, and all are giving high estimates at this point. But we could expect to need 10 additional staff members to accommodate that remote learning or remote academy based on our best guess on anticipated enrollment. Again, the enrollment that we would be having for, recommending for remote programming next year are our students who have elevated health risk or who live with family members who have elevated health risk. So it wouldn't be like this year where people could choose, they would need to at least notify us that there's a health risk involved. And again, at this point, my recommendation would be that we do that if it continues to be mandated by the State Board of Education. If that guidance changes and it is not mandated, my recommendation would be that we do not have a remote academy, but that we continue to meet the medical needs of our students as we always have on an individual basis. Non-certified staff, next year, we do not anticipate needing contact tracers. If the pandemic continues in the direction of having a lower number of positive cases, we should be able to handle contact tracing with our current staff. If we see a change in that, we would come back to the board and let you know if we felt we needed additional staff for contact tracing in the new school year. Our contact tracers have been an amazing help, and we really appreciate the board's quick action on approving that for us during this year. And depending on student selection, we may need some teacher assistance to help with individual education goals for our early childhood through eighth graders who may be in remote academy. So if we have students with IEPs in that remote learning experience, we may need some teaching assistance to support in that format as well. And then guest teachers, what we all used to call substitutes, but we feel guest teachers is the more positive term now to use for them. We may need guest teachers not only for in-person, but also for the remote program, should we be able to offer that in the new year. From the area of business services, we wanted to kind of share with the board just some thoughts to be aware of from each of our departments. And so in the area of finance, Stacy and her department are working on developing plans for the federal funding pending the annual year-end analysis of our student growth. So as the Department of Student Learning shared with the board, as we're looking at our student academic growth, having that data will help us then determine how to best utilize those federal funds. As an update to that federal funds, a quick reminder, you know that the first round was in the $200,000 range, which we used to purchase technology. The second, SIR 2, comes to us for about $650,000, some of which we're using for Summer U. And SIR 3, a couple of weeks ago, we were told to expect $800,000. In the last week, we've been told that is now at 1.5 million for District 25. Each of those federal funds have specific guidelines and dates. Stacy has already been putting together a really great document, and we're excited to share with you at the next meeting, that easily describes each of those funds, shows you the details of dates and what those funds can be used for. And we'll be able to put in that document exactly how those funds will be used, make it available so the community can very easily see on kind of a one-pager, all that money, what it will go to, and be able to track the use of that. So that is coming too. But again, we need to see how our student growth is so that we make sure we're using those funds in the appropriate way to support our students. Also, Business Department is using data to identify which students experience the most unfinished learning and in what areas, and identifying if supports are needed for a broad group of students or a specific group once we finish that assessment. In the area of facilities, as we move into the new school year, increased cleaning will continue, but we will not necessarily be sanitizing desks between every class period. In the area of transportation, currently bus capacity is a total of 50 people on a bus. We will follow whatever the guidelines are as we start the new school year. For paid bus riders, we are going to open paid bus riding options again in the new school year. Families will have, through the registration process, the opportunity to choose paid bus riding, but we will not charge them upfront until we have determined that there is space on that bus and that we can provide them a seat, and then we would bill them. In the past, they pay upfront with registration. We just want to make sure we can guarantee them that there's a spot within those bus capacities, and then we'll charge them after that. Masks will be required again until the CDC determines they're no longer necessary. And again, in the area of food services, lunch will continue, but we're waiting on the USDA to determine funding and requirements. Coletta shares with us that the Secretary of Agriculture stated that we should know that information by the end of this month. In the area of student learning, under assessment, we will utilize our current assessment program to evaluate the achievement gaps by utilizing growth and achievement data on an individual, grade level, and school-wide basis, and I'll share some more implications about that. Under curriculum, we will employ our response to intervention and our multiple-tier system of support process to determine our Tier 2 and Tier 3 services, so small group individual services for students needing additional support early in the new school year. So again, utilizing our assessment data this spring, we will be ready with who our students are, starting in the fall, who will need extra support. We'll return to pre-pandemic implementation of our curriculum and our report cards. We will implement the Ruler Social Emotional Learning Curriculum as planned. So as the board knows, we're in year one of a two-year implementation. Year one this year has been implementing Ruler with our staff. We've been doing that throughout this year. And next year, as planned, it was to then implement the Ruler program with our students, and we're ready to continue in that process. Schedules throughout our buildings will return to pre-pandemic master schedules. Under technology, we will continue our one-to-one initiative that we started kind of out of a quick need, and we'll continue to expand on that. And we'll be ready to provide additional equipment should we have a remote academy model. Under the area of student services and special education, program also will continue as implemented pre-pandemic. IEPs will be implemented for students who receive special education. Our early childhood programs, again, will return to their Monday to Thursday schedule. We'll return to five full days. You'll remember that we started this year with partial days for instructional programs. We'll return to regular schedules for students with resource and all support services. We may have possible remote classes or remote-related services. Related services are things like speech and language, social work, based on student needs for students who choose a remote option in the new school year. And we are looking at a social emotional learning screener that we've been reviewing and that we hope to use in the new year and could have some implications for additional support services based on how our students respond to that. So some financial considerations, again, should we offer a remote option next year? It could be an approximately $550,000 cost to hire teachers that would be specifically assigned to that remote program. As we estimate typically, when you look at salary, benefits, and all the components, we typically plan for about $55,000 per certified employee. It's to be determined if there'd be additional technology to support that remote programming. And it's to be determined, again, how we will use our federal funds based on our spring assessments and the social emotional learning screening that we are reviewing. So I guess in a short summary, we expect 21-22 to be what we used to consider a typical school year with the possibility of a remote opportunity for those students who have health risks or live with family members who have health risks. Again, I would share that it's really important that we remember there is guidance coming out in mid-April that could have some mandates or could have some recommendations. We need to consider those as we move forward. But our plan would be to communicate to families tomorrow, after tonight, for the 21-22 school year, for those who wish to choose in-person, that that would be a full five-day program, a more typical school experience that we're all used to.
All right. A little closer to normalcy. Comments, questions?
Mr. President.
Rich?
Just a couple of questions. There may be some points that maybe I missed or maybe just weren't fully covered. I know you mentioned that we're trying to get back to normalcy. What does that mean for sports, activities, clubs, all those types of extra-school activities?
So we have been doing some sports according to the IESA rules that align with the Illinois Department of Public Health. We as well have had extracurricular, a selection of extracurricular clubs and activities since the start of the school year. As we move into the new school year, all of those extracurricular sports would be your more typical experience. Having said that, if there are still IDPH expectations and state rulings like no more than 50 people in a room, right, we will need to adhere to those things. But we expect at this point to reopen all clubs and activities in-person like we did pre-pandemic.
Okay. On the remote academy, when looking at that remote academy, is the intent to be school agnostic so that, you know, you can cohort from different schools to get a volume?
Yeah, absolutely. We would need to have, this is the District 25 first-grade remote class. It could be students from first grades at all of our schools, because if you look at that remote enrollment right now, a school might have five first graders.
Right.
So it would be not school-specific. It would be the Dunton first-grade class or what have you. But that the curriculum there would be aligned to the grade levels across the district. So when a student does move from remote academy back to in-person, they would go to their own homeschool for that in-person.
Okay. Then kind of along with maybe a different variation of remote academy, I know you said you wouldn't recommend an optional remote academy, but the current programs that are available, such as being a part-time student, would still be available then next year?
So by law, and that's pandemic or not pandemic, a family has a right to duly enroll. That means I enroll my child in the public school for a part of the day and in a private school for another part of the day. And a family has the right to partially enroll. That means I enroll my student, again, maybe I choose math or maybe I choose mornings, and I homeschool my child the other half. So that is in Illinois law and will continue again, whether that's remote, in-person, pandemic or not pandemic.
Okay. Just a final question then, Laura. Knowing that we're going to be talking about the achievement gaps in May, I believe it was at some point in May, does that give enough time to then do all the planning that's necessary with the teachers, the staff, all those types of things to be prepared for August, I think August when we go back? Is that enough time to do what's necessary there?
So that's typical in a typical school year, that we have a school improvement day in May, and that's when teachers review all of the data for assessments. And they then create the students that are recommended for Tier 2 or Tier 3 services for the start of the next school year, so that's a typical timeline for us.
I just think it may be something to evaluate, knowing that this year might be, or coming out of this year, might be a little bit different. So if we're going to be looking at that one and a half million, there may be more different features and functions and capabilities that might be available to teachers.
That could be. That SIR 3 that you're referencing and one and a half million, the dates are that, the application for that becomes available after July 1, and those funds can be used through 2024. SIR 2 through 2023, SIR 3 can be used through 2024. So that federal money is wise in terms of realizing that should we see learning loss or achievement gaps, you don't close those in a short timeline, but that you create a way of addressing them that can be sustainable and meet what we know about child development and child learning. So we would be looking to make a more long-term use of those funds that we feel could be consistent in impacting kids.
Thank you, Dr. Bynne, for that comprehensive report. And I'm really impressed that our audience is so committed and dedicated that it's going to be 11 o'clock and everybody's still here, so that's really impressive, I have to say.
We're going till midnight again.
Yeah.
One of those two-day meetings.
Yeah. President Serenaglia will provide donuts for the after-party right now. So in keeping in mind this, you know, viewing things from an equity and inclusion lens, as the weather is getting warmer, and we have, you know, now till June left, has there been consideration made for outdoor, inviting our remote students, especially on Mondays, for any outdoor kind of activities that are social distance, for social, you know, kind of social-emotional development opportunities? Things like, Jim, I was just wondering if there were any considerations made, especially because the weather's been so nice lately?
Yeah, that's something that can increase. We have, though, I'll give you an example. Olive Mary Stitt, one of their grade levels, does their Iditarod challenge outside, and students in the remote programs were invited to be a part of that, if they were comfortable doing that. Our PTA Council also, I won't give it away, but is working on a really exciting opportunity, and as a part of their planning, considering how remote students could be engaged in that as well. And so, but thank you for bringing that up. We will continue to consider that as we have more opportunities to be outside this spring.
No, thanks for the reminder. I saw that Iditarod on Facebook, actually, so Adam Harris, thank you for that. I saw, that was cool. And as far as planning for next year, now we're hearing of different variances of COVID virus and so forth, and hopefully that doesn't happen, COVID totally goes away, but has there been consideration for a Plan B, just in case, you know, the Brazil version or the UK version, South African, whatever it is?
So the Illinois Department of Public Health, very recently, published an updated adaptive pause guidance, and so that's something that we would bring to the Board just for your information, on what the Illinois Department of Public Health would recommend, should there be community spread. But at this point, our plan would be to be in-person with the mitigation strategies we've been able to develop, as they are currently.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Bynne. And then the last thing, because the recommended action item includes Mondays, and I really appreciate our students who spoke today, I really appreciate our educators who spoke today, so there's diverse perspectives on this Monday issue, and we, as a Board, take in all perspectives from all stakeholders. And I know that there will, that there's some adjustment that we talked about as far as the wording of the action, so I really appreciate that we consider this Monday in accordance to the adjust, you know, in accommodation and adjustments in accordance with communication with our educators and our teachers. So again, we look at all perspectives, and looking at that even further is appreciated. So thank you, Dr. Bynne.
Mr. President?
Yes, Gina.
So, Dr. Bynne, question for next year. You noted in facilities that we were going to discontinue sanitizing in-between classes. Is that across both elementary and middle school, when the middle school's changed so much?
Yeah, the ongoing research that the Centers for Disease Control has been doing basically shares a couple of updates with us, that surface spread is very limited, extremely limited. And also, the CDC and Illinois Department of Public Health state that temperature checks are no longer recommended. We currently are still doing them, but, so we would adapt to that updated guidance in both the surface piece and the temperature check in the new school year.
Okay. And then, next question. So, agree with Alisha, I really hope COVID's completely gone, in light of the fact that we're not living in that world at this moment. If we go with a remote academy, and we do have a classroom or a set of students that needs to quarantine for whatever the reason is, would they be invited to go and attend in the remote academy, or do you have a vision for how they would be educated while they would be out?
Thank you, that's a good question. We haven't finalized that, except that it would be unlikely that they would livestream in, like they are doing now. We would either connect them to a remote academy, or a remote tutor, or we would provide materials for them to work on while they're home, like we currently do when someone is sick, so that they could do independently, and then would return to their typical in-person class when their quarantine is over. So we've still got some details to do on that, but again, it would be very unlikely that they would livestream in, and we'd look at other ways to support them while they're home.
Okay. And my last question for the moment is, with the new guidance due to come out within the next two weeks, is there any conversation or indication on potentially what that will entail if we're going to start communicating next week, and then all of a sudden, potentially, we just had all this great conversation around communication, we're going to have to pivot a week later?
So the new guidance that's coming out, as we understand it, addresses the new school year, doesn't address the rest of this current school year. We fairly recently got updated guidance that addresses this current school year. So the new guidance, again, we're told mid-April. I've seen very rough drafts of it, but since it could change, I'd hate to share some of that and it be dramatically different. But I think the most specific part of it that will impact us is the, what I will say is a likely change from the current guidance that says remote learning must be offered for students who have health risks. I believe that's the biggest piece that could change, that would have an impact on our next year, that if it goes from must offer remote to a district can choose to offer remote.
Yes, Rich?
Move on to the motion, then. I move that the Board of Education implement in-person learning on Mondays effective April 26, 2021, while continuing the option for remote learning for families that choose it, that this continues through the current 2020 and 2021 school year, and empower the Superintendent to make the final details, and communicate such details to the community as soon as possible.
All right. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Scott, second? This second motion, we do separately?
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right. A slightly altered motion on the table?
Can I just add, for clarification for everyone, that with the final details, we will, we would communicate those as soon as possible, in order to balance all the needs that we have by adding in-person learning on Monday. There's a possibility, I don't know this for sure, but a possibility that I couldn't determine in those details, that it includes maybe an early dismissal, or a slightly shortened day on that Monday. I don't know that for sure, but I just want to put that out there, that we will communicate as soon as possible, all the final details, but that is one piece that could be in place to make sure that we can do all that our teachers need to continue those dual modes of learning.
So we can start the voting, I guess, down by Rich, since he made the motion?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll say no.
Four?
Four, three?
Four, yes.
Yep. Vote passes four, three?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, another, no, not, not easy decision, and there is no right answer, in my opinion. While we have 15% of our students home in a remote environment, and we have, you know, an obligation to that population, as well as our entire constituency, which includes, you know, IEP students, small, small group instruction, one-on-one instruction, some of these things, we're, you know, probably not going to be able to replicate, so I think that's, you know, that's really why we just saw a little bit of a divide there, so I just wanted to draw that out. But ultimately, we have a second motion item, somewhat related, but more for the, more for the serious situation of illness and such, if somebody wants to make that recommended motion?
Mr. President?
Rich?
I move that the Board of Education implement full in-person learning for the 2021-2022 school year, while offering a separate remote learning option for students at increased risk of severe illness, and for students who live with people at increased risk, as required by the Illinois State Board of Education.
Thank you, Rich, thank you, Aaron. Any thoughts or comments on that one? All right, start the voting now with Rich.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, vote passes seven, zero. All right. So that, I think, concludes our pretty significant Superintendent report. Is there any additional community input?
Mr. President, I just have a, is it okay if I just ask Dr. Bynne to clarify something?
Sure.
Dr. Bynne, as far as the Mondays go, if you could just reiterate the amount of planning that our teachers need, and if you could just reiterate that?
What I would say in terms of planning is, originally, remote Mondays, we created to give them time to collaborate with each other, as they plan for dual modes of instruction. Our teachers, and we probably shouldn't have been surprised by this, our teachers took that Monday to a different level, and figured out how to provide instruction in a meaningful way, so that the level of instruction was one that they felt was appropriate for our students. And so, while, I will say, I felt remote Mondays originally was to help them plan for the Tuesday, especially for Tuesday through Friday, dual modes of learning, and making sure that that experience was the best it could be. They took it a step further and made Mondays as meaningful instructionally as they possibly could. The amount of time that it takes to do that is beyond what they're getting on Mondays, when we have some asynchronous learning, but it gives them some time to do that, again, especially to collaborate with their colleagues, so that students across the grade levels are having a similar exceptional level of experience. And so, while there's not an exact number that I could put on it, I think in general, teachers across the district are utilizing about two hours on Monday, within that, some of that asynchronous learning. Again, still doing, as they always do, additional planning and work outside of the workday, but we tried to build some of that in, so that, again, when kids are here Tuesday through Friday, or on those, and in those dual platforms, that they had some time to adjust their instruction to meet both of those levels.
Thank you for addressing that. You know, I observed a Green Bay early childhood virtual class, and was just so impressed and inspired by the educators, and listening to the amount of, I think it would be great to almost document, the amount of pro bono hours that our teachers have put into planning during this very, very difficult year. And the early childhood class that I heard from, the teacher, the three educators, just incredible how everything was created from scratch, so I just want to recognize the amount of pro bono time that has been put by our educators, and even people like Adam Harris working on Saturdays. Thank you.
Kind of like Aaron said, if you ever need a lift, go to an NSSEO meeting. I would say, join an early childhood class, even in remote learning. I was there the day that Alisha joined that remote class, and I suspect you did not know you were going to be asked to be up dancing, jumping, and singing.
Yeah, I was, I was a little out of breath. There was a lot of jumping and interaction, and I think we need to take that class. I told the educators, and kind of, I don't know, it needs to be like amplified across the country, so it was an excellent class.
All right, well, let's move on. No additional community input?
Could I ask one quick question? As far as the Mondays being, you know, early release, how will that work out, if that thing can hurt?
Good question. Well, we would need to work out those details, and would communicate that. Good question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any future agenda items they want to pose, or, did you have a comment, or just your?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. I was like, how'd you know what I was gonna? Any future agenda items? I'm trying to think if anything came through an email this week, I don't think so. Something jumps out at me. All right. No reason to continue closed session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
How appropriate.
Yes. Second. Gina, thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven, zero, we are adjourned.